We really should have like a little get together.
Not bad.
Wow.
Oh, that's funny.
See, we gotta get to our social.
All right, we'd like to welcome everybody out to our March board meeting. It's beginning to look like spring in Teton Valley. There's a little bit of slush outside. It's not all fresh. Looking pretty nice. Had some bluebird days, which have been gorgeous. So to begin with, let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So thank you. Shannon, do you want to just announce what's going on in your room?
Sure. So last time we met, we had a plan where I was going to fill in and run a board meeting. And since our last meeting, I've actually moved into a new job. And I've been named the interim head of school for the Jackson Hole Community School, which is a big role and has taken a lot of my capacity. And so Ben was kind enough, when I reached out to him, to give me a pass on this meeting. But I'm hoping maybe as we get through the next month or two, that I'd be able to jump back in and do it. So thanks, Ben, for giving me the pass.
Wow.
Thank you, and congratulations as well.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's great.
Okay, so moving into our consent agenda. Consideration of board meetings for February 8th and February 22nd. Any questions regarding those? Okay. Any questions regarding our monthly financial report and payment of bills?
The top of that report says Alexi was there.
Yeah, and it's Trisha was there.
Okay.
That's all I saw.
So just a quick change in minutes, okay? To the financial.
Meeting.
Meet, alright, yeah, committee meeting. So then moving into personnel, Mr. Wilson-Hume.
Personnel report for March 2021. Notice of leaving the district mid-school year. Steve Wright, baseball coach. Heather Hanamaya-Kai. I apologize for that pronunciation as a paraprofessional. Hayden Evans is a paraprofessional. Melissa Young is a teacher. Shawnee Tonks is a custodian. Brianna Relfs as a paraprofessional. Individuals offered positions since the last board meeting. Rita Hamlet-Madina as a paraprofessional. Kendall Hogestraut as an elementary teacher. Transfer of assignments. Bridgette or Brigitte Bros from a paraprofessional to a teacher. Substitutes offered positions. Michelle Blake and Ethan Thrasher. And one special situation regarding Michelle Nicholson submitted a request for sabbatical for the 21-22 school year. So that is the personnel report.
Okay, any questions regarding personnel?
So one question I had with regards to the special situation. Mr. Wilson, are those, I haven't seen one of those in a while. Can you give us a little bit of, as much as you can, in open session context and/or kind of whether there's a, is there a policy for that? And/or how does it align with like the master agreement with the teachers association?
Yeah, great question. So it is in board policy, and it's also in the master agreement in both places. And there is a March 15th deadline for teachers to submit a sabbatical request to the board. When that is received, administration works under the condition of finding a qualified candidate to fill that position as a one-year-only position. So that's the real criteria that has to be met before administration is ready to bring it to the board for board approval. So it's on the personnel list tonight as administration has found a qualified candidate to take that position for the next school year. So the administration recommendation is to approve that. In my experience, we've had one maybe every five or six years. But yeah, it's in both board policy and the master agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wilson, with that, is there any special language that needs to be presented with that? Or is it just approved through our consent agenda?
Well, as it's listed as a sabbatical request for the 21-22 school year, the board could either approve it within the consent agenda as a personnel standard report, or if the board chooses to make a special motion. That's certainly your prerogative, but where it's spelled out specifically for that individual for the next school year, I believe that covers what we would need for verifying that that request has been reviewed and approved by the school board.
With the consent agenda?
With the consent agenda, yes. Where it's spelled out individually, Chris.
Okay. All right, any further questions? All right, if there's no further questions regarding the consent agenda, would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I would make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we have the opportunity to move into public comments. Diane, have you received any public comments for tonight at this portion of our meeting?
Oh, we did not receive any public comments for this portion of the meeting, but we'll have one for later on.
One for later on, okay. Okay, remind me of that, so we don't just adjourn without that, please.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so moving forward tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do have a public comment I didn't know I had to submit it.
Okay, yes. So we'll allow you to make a public comment right now. There is a form that needs to be filled out and handed to Diane. So, and the public comment needs to be about an action item on the agenda tonight?
It is.
Okay.
It'll be brief.
Okay.
Could you please go to the podium?
One apology, Tim Wells, 4600 Pinnacle Trail. I saw that I could have submitted a public comment. I thought coming in person was better, so I apologize if I did it backwards. I'm just here, I am the catalyst behind what I hope you guys consider as a backup offer for Victor Elementary School. I have talking points, but I really, my public comment is just that I'm here to answer questions when it gets there, if you guys have anything for me, and that's all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carter, yeah, please fill that out, Tim, and get it back to Diane, please. Okay, so moving forward tonight, we have the opportunity to have some student highlights presented by Mrs. Christensen from the Victor Elementary. So Mrs. Christensen.
Hello.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson, do you have my video link up there?
I do, just give me one.
Before I get started, I want to give my greatest appreciation to Melanie Moulton for putting this video together. She is a talent and a fantastic human being. She made the video for Victor and for Teton yet on her free time. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Melanie and tell her that I truly appreciate her and thank you. So, here's the video.
And here we have our live broadcast. We're in the hallway Tuesday.
Okay, so we tried to include as much as we possibly could in five minutes, but we wanted to show the use of all of our beautiful spaces in our rebuilding, how our staff are interacting with students, but also how we're taking to make self-care within our building. So, do you have any questions for me? It was hard for me to pick a student highlight when this year has been, it's been hard, but just celebrating the fact that we're in school is what that is about.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Megan.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Thank you.
Yeah, that was awesome. I love these. These are so awesome.
I really like the broad overview of these videos. So it'll be fun next year to maybe see the little, like, what are those kids doing when they're back-to-back reading?
Sure.
Or more about the wellness.
Absolutely.
For the Wednesdays. But I love these videos. They just, oh, they're cool. Thank you for sharing.
Of course.
Your school's beautiful.
It is beautiful. We're very lucky. Teton is beautiful, too. We have two great schools.
You do, yeah.
We have a lot of great schools, too.
You're not biased, are you?
I'm biased.
So adventurous.
It's cool, too. I know Victor is pretty awesome.
Yeah, I was gonna make a Victor comment, but I said I better not.
I'll make it. The staff in Victor, you know, as a parent is just top-notch. So we, as a parent, as a board member, appreciate you and your leadership and your staff. It's good as a parent sending your kid to school every day, just when you see them excited to go to school. And so it just is like a, it's like a peaceful feeling as a dad, you know, to know that your student's taken care of, both academically, emotionally, and so I appreciate it a lot.
Of course, thank you. It's all about the staff, absolutely. Kudos go to them.
Yeah, please thank your staff on our behalf.
Absolutely.
For all the hard work that they put in, and thank your students for being so resilient. I mean, you know. I love the fact that you celebrated that we're in school, so thank you for that.
Of course. It's something to celebrate.
Megan, I just have one question. I was struck watching the video by the technology that's in place in our new schools. And even though we've had a lot of conversations about tech needs over the past six to nine months around pandemic response, I'm curious if being in this school, having access to the technology that's been in there, has offered surprising, unanticipated support during this time? I'm curious kind of what you've experienced.
Oh, absolutely. When we were in our old building, we hardly ever had internet. So it's kind of a little bit of a nightmare now, but.
Our was low.
Yeah, it absolutely has. And then our teachers planning and preparing for the unknown, and so just injecting technology in everything, and in our teaching, in our commons area, everything has been a game changer for our kids.
Awesome.
Absolutely.
You can see it, the way that they're interacting with it, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty great.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you, Mrs. Christensen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep. We're gonna turn just a moment over to Mr. Wilson-Hume as well, as there's some other highlights that need to be mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So over the past couple of weeks, you know, there's been a lot of great things happening in the school district, and particularly with the high school. We had 13 wrestlers qualify for the state tournament, and six of them placed. Our boys' basketball team took third place this last week in Boise. Our speech and debate teams have done very well in their competitions. We had one of our band students qualify for a national performance. So that was done virtually and did a great job there. The National Scholarship Program for Young Women, Distinguished Young Women, happened on Saturday night at the high school, and they were able to raise over $25,000 in scholarship funds that went out to those 10 young ladies. So that was a very well-done program, and appreciate all the efforts that the volunteers put in for that. So just some really amazing things for our students and our staff to show great accomplishments during a challenging year, and to their resiliency, and really stepping up to the challenge in front of them. I don't know if you want to mention anything about the band in Boise? I mean, we talked about it, but maybe for everyone to hear, just if that's okay.
Yeah, real briefly, so I was over supporting the boys' state basketball, and I wanted to show my kids the Capitol, just where we were staying. So we walked to the Capitol, showed them kind of how it works, and they were setting up a projector, and I'll share the pictures with Jeannie, so she can share them. But there was a large screen, and they show bands throughout the whole state of Idaho. And pure coincidence that when my wife and children and I were there, Teton High School was presenting, and along with the middle school. So it's cool to see the great staff and students are representing us well in Boise in the State House. So I'll share those pictures with Jeannie, but it made me dang proud to be from Teton this weekend, and in a lot of aspects, more than just sports, so.
Thank you. And all of this is archived on social media, on the district Facebook page. I appreciate Jeannie, the coaches, the teachers, sharing all that information. So we're really trying to put the word out and celebrate the great success our students are having, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate all the hard work that goes into keeping the district doing it. It takes the whole community, so thank you. At this time, moving forward, we'll move into updates on the real estate agreements that we have. I see we got Tason and Mandy here, so if they would please come up.
And I need to speak to the Victor property before we get too far down the road. So if they're gonna talk about Driggs, that's fine, and then let me start with Victor, and then we can kind of go from there.
Okay. So if you guys can give us an update on the Driggs property for now?
Well, Driggs is a super exciting property. It's done. Congratulations.
Good day.
This afternoon, so it is buttoned up and done. So thank you, and congratulations.
Any questions on settlement to that, or any follow-up on sale?
Yeah, can we get a copy of the settlement statement as?
Yeah, why don't you mail that out?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That was just today, so that'll all happen, I believe, that funds are wired directly, and they should be in the account as of now. So we'll get final settlement statements and deeds out there, everybody, so that it's available for review.
Thank you.
And just on that, Blake and I are tracking getting utilities transferred over. I'm following up with iCrimp, our insurance carrier, for the property liability coverage. So we're going through our checklist to close all of that out on our side.
Okay.
When the offer came in, we stopped pushing snow on the south side of this parking lot, which is into that grass area, and started pushing it west into our asphalt playground area. So just know that happened over a month ago.
Okay. All right.
Awesome.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you, guys.
Mr. Wilson-Hume, do you want to take some time before we move into Victor?
I'll take just a minute to kind of share really the legal review aspect of this. I do appreciate Tim and Dave being here. I've had communication with both of them. I'm grateful for their interest and the great communication that we've been able to have. There was some information that they needed from me, and I was happy to share that. The question came up, what can the school district do in terms of considering a second offer? So I kicked that question to the school district attorney in Boise.
And this is specific to the Victor Elementary School?
Specific to Victor. So I'll kind of backtrack just a minute, so you can get the big picture. Because education seems to be as complicated as it can be. So those of us that are all used to property and real estate in the rest of our lives, it doesn't work that way in school. And if anyone can tell you how frustrating that is to go through, look at these two individuals who have had to learn this world, and they'll ask me questions, I'll give them the answer, and they think, that makes no sense. So that's where I'm starting from, okay? The good point is, we're negotiating in open meeting.
Yeah.
Okay? So it's great, we're transparent with everything, but you lose half your negotiating power when it's in front of everyone. So that's unique to public schools and government entities. When we sold the Driggs property, I'm gonna start there just for a reference point. When we first advertised and put it out to bid, we received no bids for it. You have to go through that process first. Get it appraised, publish that it's for sale, accept and review, accept/reject any bids. We got zero bids, so then that allowed the school district to list it on the open market. Wide open, take the best offer, work out whatever you can. On the Victor property, got it appraised, published it, received three, four? Thank you. Received four bids. Accepted the first bid. That has conditions that are currently in place and are moving forward. Primarily a zone change on the parcel with the city of Victor. Now there's interest in a second offer, so that's great that there's interest. The school district attorney says we are in a legally binding agreement for the first offer, and legally cannot entertain a second offer. We have to respect that agreement and go forward until the resolution of that process, whatever that might be. And once we're through that resolution of the process, then the board can evaluate what other options you have. Either you close and you're done, or it doesn't close and go through, and then you're back to essentially square one. And by square one, in Idaho code, and the reference is 33601, you want to scribble that note down? In 33601, it talks about for the board to sell a property, the first thing you do is you have to get it appraised, and it has to be appraised within one year. So as I referenced the appraisal on Victor Elementary, it was done November 4th, 2019. So technically, to start the process all over again, the first thing the board would have to do is get an updated appraisal. Then the second thing the board would have to do is publish, this parcel is for sale. And then we had the discussion, are we going to do an auction? Before, we didn't really like that, so we went the sealed bid route. Then, once you start that over again, then you open it up and accept whatever sealed bids and go through the process all over again. But the attorney from Boise said you should not. You would be legally liable for violating the agreement and incur damages, lawsuit, open up that whole can of worms, if you opened up this door. And so that was his strong recommendation in terms of considering a second offer, per Idaho code 33601. So I just wanted to kind of share that legal review with you, and then, you know, we can have Rockefeller's present. I appreciate Tim and Dave are here to answer any questions as well, but that's where I started in terms of finding out yes or no, and how to proceed or not proceed from the attorney.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Wilson-Hume regarding this? Okay. Thank you, thank you for sharing that with us and getting that information as well. Okay, so Tason and Mandy.
Yeah, in keeping with that, we also have a legal responsibility to share the offers with you. Before we do that, Mandy, would you like to give a quick update as to the current offer status?
Sure. Yeah, so current offer is still under contract. The buyer is still within their due diligence timeframe. That timeframe ends on March 23rd. It is still contingent upon the zone change, with basically the drop dead cutoff date, so to speak, for closing being no later than June 1st. So we have two major timelines that we're looking at, two major dates, which would be March 23rd for due diligence timeframe. And that would be answering any questions that they have relating to the property, or any concerns that they have with the condition of the property, anything like that would have to be addressed by that timeline. Then the closing is slated to occur within 30 days of the zone change, or June 1st, whichever is sooner. So that is sort of the floating date, but basically June 1st is kind of, either we're gonna do it or not gonna do it, I guess. So the buyer can, if they elect, choose to complete the transaction with the zone change outstanding, or they can elect to terminate based on the zone change, so.
The zone change was last, the last Victor meeting was actually continued. They ran into the 11 o'clock hour, and so that will be picked up again, I believe, on the 18th of March.
Yes.
At that juncture, we should have some clear direction as to whether or not that zone change will be approved by the planning and zoning, at which point that will go in front of the city council, who will ultimately make the decision. If they deny it at the planning and zoning, they can still take this forward to the city council meeting for a secondary approval, because ultimately, for zone changes, that's who makes the decision. So we will wait for that to occur. I suspect we are going to know a lot more with respect to this current transaction on the 18th, and if that's denied, I think there will be some question relative to whether or not they will continue. If it's approved, then we still have one final step before then that zoning would be considered approved for the contract and closing. for the contract and closing would be no later than 30 days thereafter. So we're getting close to at least having an answer on that. And for those of you who listened, if there's any questions on that, let us know because we did listen in. And if not, I'll review the offers again.
Any questions this time?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Nope.
I have a quick question. So could Brolin still purchase the property without a zone change?
They could. They could decide that they want to take the risk, so to speak, and complete the transaction. So there's no requirement for them to complete that zone change prior to the completion of the transaction. But basically, it gives them an opportunity to step away if it doesn't come to permission.
Okay.
Yes, that's a great question.
So just a couple of questions and a little bit back to process with Mr. Wilson. So 18th is when PNC, Victor City PNC, meet. And then do we know when the city council meets?
I don't know when their follow-up meeting is with city council. I believe it's pretty close to... I'd have to look that up, actually. I can't speak to that. I want to say it's not a huge amount of time.
Okay, I'm just curious with regards to...
I could tell you when.
Yeah, would you mind?
Um, I think after the PNC meets, there's noticing requirements, and I think it's 21 days. So they could have a special meeting, like it's noticed right away after the, if, you know, it has to, PNC has to either recommend approval or denial. It can't be noticed before that. So it's, I think, a minimum of three weeks. But if most likely, so there could be a special meeting, but it's most likely a month out. I also, I don't, the dates for due diligence and such, I didn't quite agree with within the contract as far as timing. But I won't go into that, but that's on the PNC and approval, that's.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So just kind of back to Mike, a couple of questions if I can, with regards to process and timing. So, and we can do some follow-up if we need to, Mandy, but with regards to like the due diligence period. So how does that work in the sense of if the due diligence period is the 23rd? We're not going to, Brolin's is not going to have an answer, potentially, you know, by then. Is there earnest money that becomes like non-refundable at that point? Or is there maybe something that will be presented to the board for continuation? Or how do you see that playing out?
I did have the discussion with them prior to our meeting, actually on Friday, just to see if there was anything that needed to be presented to the board in anticipation of our overlapping of timing, so to speak. Just to make sure that we weren't up against anything that would need to be addressed. And they indicated no, that they didn't have anything additionally for me to submit to you as far as an extension or of concern. So basically, our interpretation of the offer is that the inspection due diligence timeframe would cover any questions that the buyer would have relating to the property. And then there is the overlying contingency regarding the zone change. It doesn't have a specific deadline to it. So arguably, that contingency will outlast
Perfect.
the inspection. So the inspection, if the buyer were to come back to us and say, maybe April 1st, and say, "We don't like the condition of the property. We found that there were mold or whatever, something wrong with the condition of the property." Arguably, you could say, that's, that contingency has ended. That opportunity has ended.
Environmental studies.
Correct, any of that. So that would have ended. So really, after March 23rd, the only outstanding item that we have in relation to this contract is the zone change. And if the buyer were to withdraw for another season, then arguably, yes, there earnest money could be at risk.
And then just, if I could piggyback on that and then pivot, Monty. So with regards to talking to the council out of Boise, in essence, we have to wait. If I interpret what you're saying correctly, we have to essentially wait until we figure out what goes on with this contract prior to starting into the next backup offer, correct?
Yes, that was the guidance from the attorney.
Yeah.
And it sounds like to play off of that, we will go back to either the auction or the silent sealed bid auction like we did before, as opposed to accepting backup. One of the questions we've had from others is, can we accept a backup? I've had somebody in advance of this meeting mention to me that they would have interest, another agent, a different firm, that they would also have interest in a backup offer in the event that we can. And so we were also kind of waiting to see what that process was going to be. One thing that I found interesting is that we won't go to the open market after and if this transaction fails, but back to the sealed bid process. And the only way, if I'm understanding Monty correctly, is the only way we'll go back to what we did with the Driggs property to the open market is if we receive no bids, once again, with the Victor sealed bid process.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, that route opens up if there are zero bids submitted.
Got it.
Correct.
Any other, I will quickly present these, even though it doesn't seem that can be accepted. Any other questions on the process, the current transaction?
So the only other thing that I would possibly say is with regards to the appraisal, if the Brolin's deal does fall through, obviously, we probably don't want to order that appraisal or incur that cost for that liability. But it might be a conversation that we have with the appraiser that they're, just so they're abreast of what's going on.
To get on their radar.
Yeah, because it's just where the market's so busy.
I think that's a great idea, because if this does fail between now and June 1, having a commercial appraisal, no less, be in the queue so that we can begin advertising in what I would consider the prime summer market would make a lot of sense.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't order it per se, but at least just have.
No, I would have that on the right side.
And Tason, I heard you acknowledge that you've had at least one other potential offer or party?
Just a comment from another agent, another real estate broker, who said that, you know, "I understood you had a backup offer. That was published in the newspaper." And I said, "We do have backup offer." And it was, it was his understanding that we likely wouldn't be able to accept one. But he said, you know, in advance of the meeting, "If you are able to, please advise and let me know as well."
Okay. Is that the only other interest you've had in the property?
No, we've had a number of phone calls who have just been waiting for the due diligence to lapse and/or the zone change to lapse with the current contract.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, further questions? All right.
Very quickly, Matt, we received the backup offer actually in three phases, so to speak. The first backup offer was delivered with a $630,000 purchase price, a $6,500 earnest money deposit, a due diligence period of 75 days from the cancellation of the first position contract, and closing of 150 days from the cancellation. It asked seller to finance 300,000 of the 630, and it also required a zone change of some commercial or mixed-use zoning, similar to what the current offer is requesting. Although it wasn't clear as to exactly which zone type they would be asking for. Although I do believe it fell within the guideline of what the planning and zoning had requested or had noted to us that would be acceptable at the outset of our investigation. Backup number two, we received from the same party. The interest rate for the owner financing portion was increased to 7% for that owner financing. And we then received a third backup, so I would have considered... Right, yeah. And this is where Mr. Wilson, who had brought up the Idaho code and for our review. So thanks for doing that. They provided a third backup offer of the similar terms, in terms of the purchase price is 630,000. The earnest money was increased to 15,000. The due diligence and closing periods were the same. Still a contingent on a zone change, however, this backup offer is now cash, not asking for the owner financing portion. So knowing that the process will know that we have some additional interest there, I think thus. Great. Does anybody have any questions on those backup offers?
Those backup offers are all from the same buyer?
They are.
And they're like an evolution of the offer, basically?
They were, yes.
Help me understand from your professional real estate perspective, this is speculation, why would a buyer structure it that way?
I, you know, for improving an offer to, you know, get a foot in the door in markets like this, I think it was something that perhaps they recognized that owner financing with respect to a public entity was probably going to be challenging. So, you know, with the first two offers, they were both owner financed. One was to make it a little more appealing with the increased interest rate, which I would agree is more appealing. But they probably recognized the challenges associated with that and were able to secure a cash or financing and thus presenting the third offer.
Great.
It's my speculation.
Thank you.
But were you asking why the three offers were presented? As opposed to just a single offer with maybe an addendum?
No, 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 not the structure, the, more the strategy.
Oh, okay, great, okay.
And then, thank you for that professional opinion, because we have the... Is it appropriate for me to ask the same question of the potential buyer?
In this case, where we're discussing this, the only thing I would caution is, you know, getting into...
A negotiation?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just curious about the why. You offered sort of three offers in this structure, same reason they're explaining?
It's one of the common up there.
I don't know, just...
Just the...
Yes.
Yeah, that's okay.
I guess I made the first offer because it was what I felt comfortable offering that I knew we could execute on. After we did that, it's kind of, again, kind of foot in the door, time was up the essence. We would have liked to make an initial offer. We were moving our factory and just didn't have the capacity. So the improvement really was me lining up additional investors and a team to feel confident that we could close a non-cash offer.
Great.
So we feel really good about what we want to use it for and being able to close. And then on this due diligence period and money going part in closing, our days are off. It's, to me, it's 30 days from due diligence, is that the property has to be purchased, which is well before June 1. You guys come up with the contract, but I thought the due diligence was the 15th of this month. That I could be off on my days, but for sure, 30 days from then, the due diligence, the property has to be purchased, which is well before June 1.
Thanks, Tim.
With regards to the backup offers, any further questions on our part?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations again on the Driggs property sale. Glad to have that one behind us and focusing on the remaining. I say this every time I'm here, as much as I enjoy these meetings, I can't thank you all enough for what you do for all of us. If there's no more questions, we will keep you posted on the upcoming planning and zoning. And I suppose, for the backs of your minds, to be thinking about, do we do this in a worst-case scenario as a sealed bid like we did the first time? Or an auction-type process, just for everyone to reconsider?
More conversations to have, huh?
That's right. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
You too. Have a great night.
Mr. Wilson, would you just take a moment and briefly tell us about the, just an update on the modular building in Victor?
So there was an offer from the Salmon School District for that modular building at the appraised value. The board accepted that last month. We notified the Salmon School District, sent them an invoice for half payment upfront and half upon delivery. And then we'll coordinate with our maintenance staff in terms of helping with some of the basic demo. There's two wooden porches and steps that are on the west side of the building. You know, some of the skirting, getting some of the shrubbery out in preparation as the nine-foot snowbanks that Victor seems to always brag about melt down. Got to take a Victor shot anytime I can. I'm recovering.
You get more snow.
Oh, wow.
That's not a shot.
You're from there. Respect your roots, Wilson.
Long time ago. Trying to get a little lightness in this meeting, so. So we're grateful that we can move forward on that modular building from Victor and anticipate that happening spring, early summer, which should be tomorrow, the way the weather's going.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding that? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Yep.
All right. And thank you for being here tonight, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So moving forward, we'll move into school reports. As far as everyone had an opportunity to review school reports and ABC, PR report, Education Foundation report. Okay. Any questions regarding that that we can pass along or pose to Mr. Wilson? Okay. So with that, we just, again, like to say thank you to our admin and all those who keep our district running, you know, and many facets. I'm not going to try to hit every one of them because I know I'll miss some of them, so. So thank you. Mr. Wilson, we'll turn the time to you now for COVID update and any new updates from the governor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will work to be clear and concise, as there is a lot of information that seems to be changing at a high rate of speed in both of these areas. First of all, let me go to East Idaho Public Health's website, where they're tracking community data. And you can see the numbers have gone back up as they were in a pretty good decline for a number of weeks, not just for our county, but for the counties around us as well. Within Public Health's data site, you can click on their regional response plan, which was updated on the 4th of March. I'll reference this in a few minutes. On our district website, when you click to the COVID updates, it takes you to the COVID page and then to our COVID plan. Anytime there is an update, either from Public Health or the state through the governor, those links are added and highlighted with the most recent ones first. So what I appreciate about that being on our website is it's a dynamic live document that can be updated as that information is coming in. I'm grateful for Jeannie and the efforts that she puts forth in publishing a lot of this information on social media and through email. Let me take a second and pull her recent email that has really the best overview summary that I could just briefly share in terms of COVID and the school district. Give me one minute. So in this email summary that Jeannie sent out today to staff and the board, you can see the numbers going up. It was almost a solid month that I had gone before I received any of the positive notifications from Public Health. That hasn't happened since August. So these two positive cases, as confirmed through Public Health, come to me. I forward that to admin and they go through their contact tracing. Summary of vaccinations for those that weren't able to get it previously. And we appreciate Teton Valley Health and Public Health prioritizing educational staff and working to get that out to the community. As you track national news, that certainly is not the case across the nation. So we're very fortunate in Idaho. A brief summary from Teton Valley Health in terms of how they're handling the COVID hotline, test positivity, vaccinations. A little summary on how the numbers have gone up. We were trending to drop down to the green level, and then with the numbers jumping up, more counties came back up to the yellow. And then updates in terms of CDC and Public Health. The same protocols are still in place, staying home if you're sick, maintaining a six-foot physical, social distance, wearing face coverings, washing your hands frequently. And then how updates will be shared tonight in board meeting. Snapshot of the COVID data dashboard that we publish in terms of summary numbers for schools. They seem really high, but you have to remember, we're tracking this since August. And then, you know, some of the information from Teton Valley Health about reset horses for vaccinations and also from Public Health. So I'm very grateful that Jeannie puts the time in to provide a very clear, concise summary for the school district, for staff, and for parents to access. At this time, administration is not bringing any recommendation to the board to make any changes to our COVID plan. And as I've been getting questions from parents and staff and students and community members about the changes that are happening... And as I've been getting questions from parents and staff and students and community members about the changes that are happening from Public Health, my reference point, and I've been saying this for a year, is we cannot social distance in school. We cannot do it on a school bus, in a classroom, in a hallway. I had about an hour and a half that I got to be in here setting stuff up and no one else was in this room. And it was awesome to work for an hour and a half without my mask on. And I did that because no one else was in the room. Teachers don't have that luxury. Students don't have that luxury. Hopefully, we're getting outside for recess and mask breaks as frequently as we can. But if we cannot social distance, I strongly believe we need to keep the protocols in place. And the evidence is, it's working. We have cases in our schools. We have cases in our community. And all of the reviews show schools are some of the safest places our kids can be. Because I appreciate, it's not pleasant, it's not fun, nobody likes it, but it's working. And it's allowing us to have school in a safe environment for students and for staff. And there's discussions about Public Health Board met last week and they're changing some things. And then community leaders, be that the counties or cities, they're meeting and they may or may not be changing some things. And that's great, and that is community, but we are responsible for the schools and what happened in the schools, regardless of what everyone else outside of us decides. So because of what we are doing is working, and we'll continue this discussion every single month. But in my view, when it's working, we keep doing what's working. So that's kind of state, regional, and local updates in terms of COVID and how it's being managed in our schools. I appreciate everyone's help in the community to pull off successful athletic seasons. As well as we did, was a great accomplishment and quite honestly, a surprise. I didn't think we'd be able to make it through our winter sports inside events through a full season. So to be able to do that and do it successfully with limitations and challenges is it... It's just a tribute to our students and our staff that are on the front lines of getting that work done every day. So that's kind of my big picture summary in terms of COVID and where we're at as of today. So let me stop there and see if there's any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Monty, I really appreciate everything that you have said. And I just think that we, as a board and as admin, we need to start having a discussion about when masks can be removed. I think we need to be proactive about this because there are a lot of people who are anxious. One... So a few people that I have talked to in Tetonia that there has only been one student that has had COVID. Tetonia does not have a mask mandate within the city. And possibly Tetonia being experimental of removing masks and seeing what happens from there if admin, if teachers want to. And also, teachers have been vaccinated. And just making masks optional, not mandatory. I do know that in Tetonia, they are not taking mask breaks. They have not been taking mask breaks and kids have to wear masks during recess since October. So I do know that that is not happening on an elementary level. So for those young kids, I know they're getting restless with masks. So for me, that is a huge concern. And I do know that we've had a lot going on, you know, between baseball and softball and one gym at the high school. And boys' basketball practicing for state and another. And then the track team practicing in the halls, doing sprints because they can't sprint outside. And the track team having to wear masks in the halls. And I feel like that is... That's... I feel like that's not okay, especially for kids sprinting and running track and wearing masks. That's not healthy. So for me, I feel like that there needs to be a discussion that needs to start. You know, we're reaching herd immunity. We're reaching the cases of teachers and admin being able to have vaccinations. So I feel like that there needs to be a discussion that needs to be started about when the masks are going to be removed.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Was there a public comment that needs to be read during this time?
I think it's...
At the end of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
I think it's... I think we just need to start having the discussion. You know what I mean? I would kind of share some sentiment. Just let's have the discussion. It's not on the agenda, obviously, tonight, but something just going forward is, you know, we talk a lot about being proactive as a board. So I think, you know, ending this year and then obviously, what even next year looks like, you know what I mean? So and I think a lot will change in the sense of data and, you know, vaccinations. So I'm not trying to get too far, and I don't think Lexi's getting too far of herself either. Just let's just start some conversations of maybe how this thing does look in three, six, nine months, so.
Okay. Mr. Wilson, with that, do you want to take that and, you know, look at what's coming up and, you know, look at data points and look at, you know, immunization rates? I'll get it right.
Immunization.
Yeah.
You got it.
And I was going to say it in Spanish. That could probably get me off. But, you know, look at that. I think there's a lot of, lot of things that may play into that. You know, that's definitely out of our control, but maybe take a look and we can, you know, we can give us an update as we look into next month.
Yep.
And we can go from there, so.
Sir, can I just say one more statistic?
Sure.
So I read on KTVB7 News that, I mean, Idaho has not been a mask mandated state, but there's only been nine counties and 10 cities that have had mask mandates. And so all of our surrounding schools, including East Idaho Public, from East Idaho Public Health, none of... Idaho Falls did for a period of time, but as of today, they lifted that mask mandate in Idaho Falls for District 93. So I feel like nine counties and 10 cities in the whole state of Idaho have not had ma... Have only had mask mandates. So I think that that's something also to look at as well.
One more thing, sorry. You know, I was in Boise this weekend at the home of some students that go to Rocky Mountain High School. And they're not even back in school. They're just on the hybrid schedule. So I think we just have to keep that into perspective as we have this conversation. I think teachers and students and staff and parents are all grateful that we've been in class. So I, for me, and I think maybe even for Lexi, we're not trying to, I'm not trying to throw everything out, you know? There's a lot that could change. Just the discussion, you know, as we try to continue to be proactive, understanding, like you said, Mr. Chairman, there are so many things that can change, you know, in a matter of a second that are outside of our control. But it was very interesting talking to, I talked to probably 10 of those high school students that literally haven't been in a classroom full-time their entire senior year. So I'm pretty grateful for the situation that we've been in here at Teton County, given that we've been in some pretty high risk levels per, you know, East Idaho Public Health.
And East Idaho Public Health just updated their data. And we have zero cases, zero confirmed, zero probable, and we're only at 13 active cases right now. So we're at 10.7 for 10,000, which is great, you know? It's good and, you know, I just, I just, it's just a discussion. I'm not saying, you know... Just a discussion to be proactive.
Monty, before we leave this topic, can you remind us where you're getting data and information to help inform the recommendations you're making to the board? I know you're looking at CDC and Public Health. Can you just refresh our memories about where your information is coming from to support the recommendations you're bringing?
So it's these main links in our reopening plan that references Public Health. It references the Stage 3 Plan that we're currently under for the state, the updated CDC guidelines. And even though the county numbers can go up or down, when you scroll through Public Health's updated plan, and right here, revision date, March 4th, 2021, look at all the colors, look at all the numbers, and it says, even in every single category, stay home if you're sick, wash your hands, maintain physical distance, wear face coverings that fully cover the nose and mouth in public when physical distancing is not possible or is hard to maintain. To me, that applies to every school space for every school day that we're in school. So that's where I'm at as of right now, and I haven't heard anything different from admin. So we are having those conversations administratively as we track this all the time from those different levels. I haven't seen anything from CDC or Public Health that says, take off your mask and be close to each other. If and when that comes, then I think that absolutely opens up a different discussion. But to Jake's point, and when I'm ready to get into the whole legislative session, the legislature has a bullseye on West Ada and Boise for not being in school. And a lot of the legislation that's going down right now is aimed at those two. And they're the two biggest school districts. They have over 70,000 kids of the over 300,000 in Idaho. So we may not like it, but we're in school and it's working. So that's what I'm coming back to.
Thanks.
Not popular, nobody likes it, I acknowledge that, especially for little kids.
I would just like to add on to what Monty said. You know, I've taken the time and I appreciate Monty taking the time as well. And we visited every school in the past month and a half.
Yeah, three, three and a half weeks, you and I went to every school.
Every school and unannounced, okay? And, you know, not only the response, but the, the... You know, I hear some of these comments, Alexi, and I didn't see that or feel that when I was in those schools. And as far as students, I mean, you see how resilient they are. And the things that are taking place in our schools because we are in school, it's phenomenal. I mean, we went to, you know, I don't, we haven't visited every classroom, but I'll bet we visited probably 90 to 95% of every classroom in the district. And in every case, there's great things going on in every classroom. And, you know, and I just want to say something to even our teachers and those that are out there. There were some classrooms we walked into. And you look at the teacher's desk and there's nobody there. And you look around and the teacher's riding with the students, you know, and the students are all engaged. And it's not that the students not, or the teacher's not teaching, but they are very much engaged in what's going on and what's taking place in that classroom. And so, you know, with that, you know, as I've had the opportunity firsthand to observe every school in the district, you know, I appreciate what staff and teachers and, you know, and when I say staff, it's top to bottom. I mean, it's the lunch ladies, it's the bus drivers, custodians, all the way through, all the efforts that they've put in to make this happen so that we are in school. I mean, and to that point that there, I've got family members who have not been in school all year. And they're in the state of Idaho. And yet, we are making it work and I appreciate that that has been able to happen here at Teton. And that's one thing I, you know, I'm proud of, you know, is that we have, you know, gone through this. And you look at the numbers that, you know, how it's affected the schools or the schools have affected the community. And because of what we've done, our numbers in the schools have decreased even when the community numbers spiked. And so, you know, is it a safe place in what we've done? Has it been without merit? I would say no. And so I appreciate the work that's gone on. And so, you know, as we move forward, Mr. Wilson, I know that you'll have a pretty strong pulse on this as we move forward. And so, you know, again, we look to you as far as sharing that pulse with us, you know, coming from the district.
I appreciate that. And I think that's, you know, we've shown how important this is because it's been on every agenda for our regular meetings. And we've, some months doubled or tripled our meetings just dealing with this issue. So the board has really stepped up in that regard. You know, we're also reviewing other extracurricular activities at the high school and middle school level, following the plan that the state has set in place, that if you're using a space, it should be less than 40% occupied. And you should have a goal of having everyone masked and social distanced as much as possible. So if there are events or organizations that are renting our facilities for some other type of event, encouraging them to follow those same guidelines.
And Mr. Chairman, I wasn't trying to take any credibility away from mask wearing. I was just trying, and I wasn't taking any credibility away from...
Yeah, we appreciate your comments.
From teachers, but it's just, I'm just trying to be proactive.
Absolutely, yep. And I...
That and nothing against your comments at all. I'm just stating what we had had the opportunity to observe as well.
Yep. And I'm getting that feedback directly to me as well, and I know all of you are, and I appreciate that. We need to be able to listen and have those conversations.
Yeah.
So, you know, within the update, if we want to talk specifically about mask wearing in schools at next month's board meeting, I will be ready to present an update on that issue. That's kind of what I'm hearing from the board is most of the things we're doing, we're okay with, but masks, whatever...
Get to that specific?
No, I don't think we need to because...
Okay. Well, then I'll just plan my regular update and hopefully the numbers are better next month.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it would be good to hear from Angela and TEA, even though they've submitted their report, just because we've talked a lot about this. And they're on the front line of this more than I am, if that's okay.
You bet. I know we had talked prior, but Angela?
I appreciate everybody's comment. I know everybody is anxious some days. I can't get out the door fast enough for a mask break. We had recess outside today because the weather was warm and it was, it was a welcome break for the cold weather and having to stay inside and taking quick mask breaks at the middle school. One thing that I, as I was hearing the discussion, I have a barrier in my classroom that's still sitting against the wall because I haven't had the heart to put it up yet. And I don't like that barrier between my students and myself. I don't like how it feels. I don't like that they can't come up and talk to me. And I don't like not being able to be out, you know, walking around, seeing what they're doing. I like to be, and I think every teacher does. But I would be hiding behind that barrier if we didn't have masks. And I know that's the case for my colleagues. So I appreciate everybody's fortitude with, you know, the mask mandate that we've had. I believe just because we've had our vaccines, I think that is a layer of protection that I feel very fortunate to have. I still have teacher friends who haven't had their vaccines yet. And I just feel so fortunate. But at the same time, I, I really feel strongly that we need to stay the course. When I see the numbers go back up, that puts that level of concern back. Do I feel confident that I'm not going to lose my life to COVID right now? Yes, I feel confident I'm not going to lose my life to COVID right now. But at the same time, I don't feel confident that I won't ever get it if we take our masks away. And I don't think, I even had a student tell me and tell the class, I had it, you don't want this. So I keep hearing that voice in my head and I have to, I have to just keep asking, just stay the course, just as long as we can do this. I think what I've seen is absolute resilience. I cried at that video because of the resilience that you see. They can pull their mask down for, you know, for a second to take a picture. They can swing on the swings, they can do all those things and the winter sports. We were scared, the teachers were scared to do that. And I'm just proud of us. And I think this is the best that we could do, this mask is the best that we could do for everybody in our district. And I do believe that we deserve to do the best for people. So I do empathize. I don't like it any more than anybody else does. But I have been at this school and every day after school, I've been going for a walk when it's, when it's nice outside and the track kids got run me over. So they're getting out and they're running too and they're feeling free. So I feel good about what we've been able to accomplish with masks. So I'll just leave it at that. Please stay the course.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments, Tisha?
I'm just wondering, Monty, if there's any way to find data on flu or other viruses that might be going on in the schools right now? Because usually February, March is a pretty big month for flu season.
Right.
So I'm kind of wondering, have we seen less of that this year?
So, yeah, great question. So the question was, you know, what kind of flu or similar illnesses are we seeing in the schools? We don't track illnesses in the schools, just for your awareness. You know, if someone calls in sick, they call in sick, be that student or staff. And we've never gotten to the level of what are you sick from, okay? So we've never collected that level of data. Interacting with the number of medical professionals, so far flu is nonexistent. They are shocked at how slow and almost zero cases. That's in our community and other communities as well. So it's interesting that while we're so focused on COVID, a lot of things that we are putting into place is greatly protecting ourselves and reducing what is typically a high flu season. Now, that's anecdotal. I don't have hard data on that. Public Health might be able to share some of that information. But that's what I'm hearing from medical professionals.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, Mr. Wilson?
Nope. I think that covers it. Appreciate the word and the great questions and the dialogue we can have and for your support.
Okay, thank you. So we do have a break scheduled this time.
Do you want me to go through legislative?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Or if you want to take a break, I apologize. I should never interrupt a break. Somebody slap me. Legislatively, there is a lot going on in the Idaho Legislature. Again, I would reference you to the Idaho School Board Association and their capital notes. That is the best summary of everything that's happening with legislation. Some of it's great, some of it's very concerning. You know, the legislators are calling out West Ada and Boise by name in committee meetings and on the floor. So a lot of stuff that they are targeting is aimed at them. And again, it's because they're not in school. That's the biggest point of frustration. There are some school board members around the state that are facing recall elections tomorrow. Tomorrow's a big election day in Idaho for a few bonds, mostly levies, and then recall elections. So to be where we're at, I am so grateful for. Some of the legislation in terms of if the board shall or if the board may negotiate with the local teachers association, it's a huge debate and stirring things up. To me, it makes no sense. If you have a good relationship in the district, you should keep doing whatever you need to do to keep that good relationship. So we'll see what happens there. Some of the firearm legislation that was pushing through sounds as if it's going to be held in committee and won't be moving forward. Personally, I think that's a good thing. We have the policies in place to cover the needs we have. Financially, Blake is extremely patient because by this time we're asking for some good numbers from him. The legislature hasn't given us any good numbers. There's a lot of ideas and a lot of talk, but until J-FAC sets the appropriation for K-12, then we'll get numbers we can really work with. So until then, it's wait and see. At the federal level, there's the huge stimulus bill. I'm starting to get my head around a little bit. They're talking about money for schools, what that means and when that hits. And if there's discretion or limitations, we'll find out. So I'm trying to do my real job, but I'm trying to be as updated as I can legislatively at the state and national level as well. But ISBA capital notes, that's the best summary you can go through. And reach out anytime to any legislator that you have a strong opinion on. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Questions regarding?
Mr. Wilson, do you want to talk about, just the one that you left out that I'm concerned about is the certification, the teacher certification?
So there, it is moving forward. We'll see where it goes. There's a lot of criteria to be a certified teacher by the state. Because there are hard to fill positions, the state's looking at creating district level certification with some minimal, very minimal requirements possibly. I have concerns about that because we want the best person in front of our kids every day that we can get. I'm always for local control and flexibility. Those are good things, but I'm not for lowering standards either. So those are kind of my initial reads on that. Any other thoughts that you have?
Just the same as you. We talked about this the other day. Just one of my biggest concerns, and I know, Mr. Chairman, you have expressed a concern too, that this legislation does not hold these non, these knowledgeable but not certified teachers to any sort of code of ethics. There's no accountability there for them. And I have concerns about putting people like that in front of, in classrooms with our kids.
And I would hope if we had the flexibility, we could do that at the local level through policy or however we do that. So if there is flexibility, we can define our own standards. So that is a good thing.
Okay.
Sorry, I have a question.
Yes.
I don't know if this is Jeannie or Monty. Did we ever get a response from the letter that we sent?
No, we have not received a response. So, and it was sent and, and yeah, we have not received a response from the education committee.
No, because it came from you.
Yeah, I checked before I came to this meeting to make sure because I had not seen it. And so I double checked and we have not received a response.
Okay.
Good question though. Okay, with that, are we all in favor of a break at this time or are we ready to march forward? Break?
Break.
All right. Okay, let's go ahead and have a break for 10 minutes or let's-
15, please.
15?
16.
So seven, 10? 10 after seven?
Take it on to that.
We're good?
Okay. We're back. So, moving forward, Ms. Hups. We are... Are you parting the agenda? I caught you with your mouth. No. Go, go, go ahead.
Um, thank you. I don't really have much to add.
Okay.
Because so much of this conversation needs to happen after we know what the numbers are. As Mr. Wilson-Hume mentioned, DAP hasn't settled on anything. We don't really know. Um, I think that our position is still the same. Any amount of money that we have over, you know, extra in our, you know, that's apparently for, you know, the holdback, we would just advocate for equity, you know, and distributing that around to everyone. So, I think that's where we start. I don't really have much more than that. Um, I talked with Mr. Wilson-Hume about anything that we can do to help, you know, garner support for the plant facility levy. We're happy to do that. Anything that the board would need, TEA's got some stuff, I guess, in the works. If there was, you know, anything that we as TEA can do, we are happy to do that. Um, we love our buildings. We love the additions that, you know, that have been put in place. And that plant facility levy really does help the district to keep them in good working order. Um, whether or not, I'm, I'm watching the legislature as well and being, and, you know, I'm on the legislative action team for IEA, having, you know, my own conversations with legislators and people on the, on the education committees for both House and Senate. Um, I just can't think of anything else that we, um, that we needed to discuss. I ask if, what, if there is anything to take to the board. Um, just nervous about our numbers going back up in the community. Um, and just the same sentiment from teachers that we need to stay the course, that this is working. As we go into testing season, I think there's a bit of confidence that we've been able to be in school, that we've been able to deliver the, the goods and the instruction and, um, and make up for some losses. So, I think my conversations with teachers have been positive in that aspect. Nobody likes testing either. Testing and wearing a mask, I don't know. Um, you know, it's kind of just, anyway, I shouldn't say that the testing itself is painful. It's taking all the time out to prepare for the test and, um, taking the test. And we'd much rather just be having, you know, great conversations about literature and, you know, working on parabolas and, you know, doing fun science things. So, I think that's the pain point for testing and teachers. But, um, anyway, I think things are going positively, um, for teachers. I, I just cannot thank the board and Mr. Wilson-Hume and everybody who has supported us being in school with masks, um, and, and just our fortitude. I just, I did, I cried when I saw that video with those kids. And it just, that learning is still taking place and that just warmed my heart. So, I know it's happening at my school, but I just, I, I, for a second, I was like, could I teach elementary? And I went, no. So, I just, my, my colleagues have, have all of my admiration for working with those littles in such a difficult time. But, um, I also had a really good conversation with a colleague about this school year and not ju... But it's hard, it's been hard. But, um, you watch the sports teams, you watch the debate team, you watch all of those struggles. And we are teaching our kids how to cope. When life hands you not just a bucket of lemons, gosh, this is a little different than lemons. Um, but we have taught our kids a valuable lesson about how to just still live your life and don a mask, a really cool one. I've seen some cool ones at the middle school. Um, and, and just get it done, right? It doesn't have to stop us. Um, and I just really appreciate that conversation and the, and the support here. So, I think that's our message from TEA. Um, and we're just grateful. We're grateful. So, thank you. Thank you for supporting us and listening when we were scared. And, and, and Mr. Wilson-Hume, thank you so much for all of your work, um, giving us all our two shots in the arm and make, I had to make sure he was gonna get his. He says, I want every teacher to have theirs first. So, I'm grateful for your leadership and your friendship. And, um, we've got this. We've got three more months. We've got this. And, um, we asked about boosters, um, um, at our last COVID call meeting, which is a really excellent call that the hospital has done every month, every week for a good share of the year. Now, we're every other week. Um, asking about that, because I heard in conversation about next year. Um, it's anticipated that there will be some sort of a booster. Sorry, I'm falling in form, meeting. Um, because I'm just so proud of us. Um, you know, a booster. Um, and I just think that that's, that's, these are all just good things. We're learning about this virus. We're, we're teaching our kids and, um, how to be, just show grit and resilience. So, that's what I have. Um, the money will sort itself out sometime. I don't know if I'll just be on the agenda next month or, you know, we're getting closer to needing to start negotiations. But, um, you know, our ideas are just to make sure that everybody is, you know, fairly and equitably treated and without, you know, great expense to the district. It's not our, not our intention to do that this year with all of the other stuff that's been going on, so.
We appreciate that, Angela, and we appreciate you, you being here. Um, prior to this meeting, we did have an executive session to see if there was any updates that, uh, you know, would come down. And as you know, there aren't any. And so, at this time, um, you know, we're, as far as making decisions and, you know, talking about specifics, we're not in a position to do it. We appreciate, uh, you know, your understanding with that. Um, I, I do have to make a comment, though, about your bucket. What were you referring to about that bucket of lemons? It wasn't a bucket of lemons. It was a bucket of what?
It's something else. I don't know.
So, without you...
Teacher boys know what she's talking about.
Okay.
I don't need something. I have class.
Now, it's on.
So, I'll leave my barnyard voice away. But I think you're referring to cow crap, right?
Right.
Okay. So, there's a saying.
Ben's gotta sing.
And so, uh, if you leave it piled up, nothing grows at all. But if you scatter it around, it helps everything grow. Okay? And if we look at our year, we got handed a pile, okay? Did we leave it piled up? No. We scattered it around and we made something good out of it, and it helped a lot of things grow. And so, thank you and, and again, share with, with your organization, you know, our gratitude for, you know, your effort, your support and, and what you're doing in the district as well. So, thank you.
You're welcome. I, one more comment, and this is my anecdote. This fell out of my pocket when I was in the other room. Um, I've, I've purchased a lot of these suckers this year. I have in my room, uh, an extra mild jar. And, um, you have to get good suckers or they, they'll, they'll take it or they'll, they'll leave it. But, um, I've gone through a lot of these suckers this year. And that's the other thing about my kids in my classroom. Um, it's not really that they have to be bribed because very rarely do they come and present themselves for a reward, but they know that this, there's been some hard things. We have to wash our desks. We have to do hand sanitizer. We have to do this. And now, I've got kids that just walk into the room. First one in the room will grab the spray bottle and just start spraying desks. And, and they'll walk out of the room without their reward. A lot of times, they'll have to go hunt them down in another class and say, oh, I forgot to give you your sucker. But it's also taught them how to be team players and how to, you know, do things in the community to help out because they know that I'm busy trying to get kids online and make sure that they're logged in. I'm trying to take attendance. I'm trying to make sure I catch all the tardies. I'm trying to make sure the class is ready. And I've, I've got a lot of stuff going on this year at my desk and that, just them walking in the room and spraying the desks and they just come in and they wash them and they do that. But this is just a symbol to me that, um, the kids are learning how to, uh, to all jump in and we're all part of the same stuff. We're spreading it around and it makes life a lot sweeter.
Good. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ms. Hups?
Thank you.
I think the mid-board meeting analogies are why the public should continue watching the board meetings.
There's a lot of truth to that, though, isn't there?
That's right.
It's awesome.
Stick around.
It's great.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So, moving forward, Mr. Wilson-Hume, uh, let's move forward to the calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the calendar, the board asked for a follow-up survey to be sent. So, that went out, oh, shortly after a board meeting, ran it for about a week. Here are the survey results. Um, did ask for parents of, at which grade level, so high school, middle school, had most elementary parents, and then staff. So, there's the breakdown. Again, the second survey confirmed the first one. The majority, fifty-three point four percent, preferred draft one, starting August thirtieth and ending June thirtieth. Uh, so, the recommendation from the calendar committee and per the survey results is for the board to adopt draft one, starting August thirtieth, ending June thirtieth, not June thirtieth.
June third.
June third, thank you, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And then, my hope would be to work with calendar committee in the fall and bring one or two years of draft calendars to the board. Hopefully, by November, December is what I'm hoping for the next timeline.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Wilson-Hume?
Uh, Mr. Wilson-Hume, I do have a question. Is there a reason why the calendar committee did not look at the, um, what the public and parents had, um, seen for the survey? That's the word I was looking for. For Thanksgiving break only being three days instead of a full five days? Because the three days has more popular vote by like over two hundred?
Uh, in, in general, it was, uh, the concern of low attendance on a very short school week from, from our previous experiences, why it's not recommended to go back to just a two-day school week.
Okay. It was just interesting because the majority of the people that, uh, answered the survey were parents, and it was the parents that wanted to have the three-day-a-week. And so, obviously, the parents would have their kids in school.
Well, and, and I think there's, you have survey results and then you have reality. Sometimes they match and sometimes they don't. So, that's important information. And then, we also know when we've had two short days for a school week, we've had low attendance previously. So, there's a balance of looking at both.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Other questions?
Just appreciate, uh, yeah, just the additional time and the additional survey results.
Welcome.
We, we put this off for you, Jake, so you could be here.
Thank you. Very kind.
We really did.
Well, do you want me to make the motion then?
Yeah. So, if, yeah, I would entertain a motion if there's no further questions.
All right. I would, uh, make a motion to a draft draft one for the twenty-one, twenty-two calendar year so school to start August thirtieth and complete June third, twenty-twenty-two.
Second it?
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any need for the, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, moving forward, um, tonight, uh, we have the opportunity to, uh, we have Pam Walker via online and also is, uh, Kristy there as well? Bonnie?
Uh, let me check and see. Pam, can you hear me okay? If you're still on?
Hi. This is Kristen Livingstone.
Hi, Kristen. How are you?
Good, thank you.
And then, is Pam connected?
She might not have been able to join.
Would, would you mind maybe just send her a quick text, Kristen, to see if she's able to connect or not?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
So, Shannon, you've been, uh, part of the Education Foundation, right? Do you wanna just give us a brief update on what's transpiring at this time?
Sure. So, after, um, about nine months, close to a year's worth of succession planning at the Education Foundation, the transition from Pam Walker as the executive director to Kristen Livingstone is happening. And so, that succession plan included, um, a lot of board work on what kind of leader we wanted to succeed Pam. It included a executive search committee. We had about seventeen applicants, I think, for the role. And, uh, Kristen joins the Education Foundation, uh, after having worked for the Teton Literacy Center in Jackson. Um, I'll let her speak more about her specific experience. But in addition to just a, a breadth and depth of experience with educational programs and operating a nonprofit, she has some specific... some specific expertise in K through three literacy programs, which we're really excited, um, for her to explore as part of potential foundation initiatives. Um, but in the interim, who knows when we'll get to new initiatives, her focus is certainly getting up to speed on all the amazing programming that, um, the Education Foundation offers. And so I'll stop there. And then I, I want to acknowledge that Pam Walker has been a phenomenal leader, um, for the Education Foundation and for the educational system in Teton Valley. She has launched, um, several significant programs, uh, as part of her tenure. Um, she is likely to wrap up the endowment fundraising campaign, which is funding that can be set aside to keep the Education Foundation stable and operational over time. Um, and, uh, she's just leaving an incredible legacy for the students and educators of this community, and we could not be more grateful, um, for her service and for the opportunity to work alongside her. So, thank you, Pam.
Okay. Thank you, Shannon, for that. Kristy.
Kristen.
Kristen.
That was my mistake.
Okay. Sorry.
Kristen.
Let's have her, uh, go ahead and introduce herself, Monty.
Kristen, if you would take a minute to introduce yourself and share whatever you would like.
Hi, awesome. I'm sorry I can't be on video with you, but thank you for having me over the call. Um, thank you for that very sweet introduction. My name is Kristen Livingstone and I am beyond excited to be the new ED of the Education Foundation. Um, I've had a wonderful onboarding experience working alongside Pam to ensure that I've had the time to get to know the Valley, um, and understand the ins and outs of the school district, um, so that I can support our students and teachers as best as I can. Um, as was said, I came previously for about the past eight years, I was working for the Teton Literacy Center, developing programs, um, that supported the school district in Wyoming. Um, and so I love programs, I love children, um, and I come from an education background. I'm very passionate about this work and, um, in the three weeks that I have been training on the job, the word that comes to mind is possibilities. There is so much wonderful work happening here in our Valley and I'm excited to continue that work and move forward. And, um, it's, it's been a wonderful introduction. So I'm here. If you guys need me, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm at the same email as Pam Walker was, executivedirector@tetoneducation.org. Um, and I'm in the same office, so you are more than welcome to pop in, um, and we can, we can chat. I would love to hear from you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate you coming and, uh, you got some big shoes to fill, but we appreciate you being here. We, uh, have all the confidence in you moving this, uh, foundation forward and, uh, look forward to working with you. So, thank you.
Thank you all. It looks like Pam's having a little trouble connecting.
Okay. Thank you for checking with her. I appreciate that, Kristen.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Jake?
Maybe I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself, but I would just like to publicly thank Pam for all of her work. And I don't know if we as a board could draft some type of just really nice thank you letter or resolution or something, just acknowledging her contribution along with the boards to the school district over these last, um, couple of years since I've been on the board. But I just think she's went above and beyond. And Kristen, um, excited to meet you and excited to work with you as well. Um, so not trying to, to track from you, but I would also just like to, uh, I think the board owes Pam something nice, whether it's a letter or a statement or something, just stating her appreciation.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, why don't we turn some time to Mr. Wilson-Hume to just kind of give some, uh, some, some big picture overview of what's transpired over the past six years?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and I can say, you know, I had the privilege of being on the Education Foundation Board for a number of years, uh, have worked closely with the four previous executive directors and value the hard work that they put in for the organization and also look forward to working with Kristen in her leadership. Pam has been exceptional and, uh, has a, a similar deficiency, uh, that I do and others do, that she wants to work really hard and she is uncomfortable with any recognition or credit for that, um, as is evidenced by she's not even here tonight. That's a compliment, by the way, but, um, you know, she is there before everybody else. She's there after everybody is gone, uh, does countless work to pull off events. I've seen that firsthand from board meetings to school events to Tin Cup activities. Uh, she's just been a tremendous leader and gives of herself above and beyond. And a couple of numbers just to share with others is that endowment is, uh, will be funded at five hundred thousand dollars. And that was an idea that came from Pam and, uh, her previous work only a couple of years ago. So that hasn't been a push for very long and to reach that goal is an amazing accomplishment and it was done through generous community support, but great credit goes to Pam and her leadership for that effort. And also, uh, Ben was insightful to ask Pam how much she has been able to raise in the Education Foundation under her leadership. That is one million, five hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Let's give her a big round of applause.
So we wish Pam was here tonight and as Monty mentioned, you know, she is not, but, uh, I did have the opportunity to, to speak with her today and, and again, how grateful we are for the effort and the work that she's put into this and, and into our community, our schools, our students, our children, you know, and our, our staff, keeping this, you know, giving us other options that we can keep things going when it's so tough to fund. And, and we as a board have our hands tied to a certain extent. So, thank you. Monty, do you have more to add?
Uh, tho- those are the main highlights and again, just thank you, Pam, for your selfless leadership for the foundation. And at the end of the day, that benefits our students, our teachers, our staff and our schools. And, and tha- that's about as noble of work as you can find, in my opinion. So, thank you for all that you've done for us.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any other comments?
That's super impressive. That's awesome. That number.
The, the numbers are, that's incredible. I would have a hard time making that much, you know, at a job in six years. Yeah. So, so thank you. Okay. Any, uh, with that, Kristen, again, welcome. We look forward to working with you. And please tell Pam thank you on our behalf and, and to Jake's comment, you know, but let's see if we can put something together, Mr. Wilson-Hume.
Yep. We will.
Okay.
Pam says, "Thank you so much," and that she's going to watch this later because I was texting her while we were saying.
She better watch it. We want to report.
We're disappointed we couldn't embarrass her more, but she, she got us on that one.
Yeah. Yeah. Blame it on technology. Okay. So with that, let's move forward to, uh, strategic planning and priorities. So Shannon, I'll turn the.
Okay. So the last time we talked about strategic planning, we had split up into groups. Jake had left the meeting early and so we gave him an assignment that he and I have not caught up on. So I'm going to use this time to just, uh, and Ben and I have not done our homework. So true confessions of where we are with strategic planning, but we can use a little bit of time, exactly.
Yeah, we did.
Yep. So we, why don't we start with the positive? And, uh, Tisha and Alexi, why don't you tell us what's been going on with you?
Tisha drafted an email and sent it out to all the school counselors. Um, and we got some feedback from counselors within the school that our kids go to and we just have like a little list. We wanted to do attainable goals. We didn't want to do anything crazy, you know, to put more workload on anybody, so we just wanted attainable goals.
And I, I kind of gathered that you said four to five kind of just points. And, and my big, you know, I went from like here focusing in on these little things to thinking, well, we need to look at this from here. So it's really not, um, detailed and I know that our educators and our administrators and they'll be able to see this and say yes. That's, you know, and if you'd like me to read the list, I can.
Sure.
It's not too long.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, under, um, school safety was what we were focusing on. And, uh, I, I emailed this to you guys. Then I, I mean, Jake, I don't have your, for some reason, your school district email. Alexi can send it to you.
Yep.
But, um.
Come on.
Under social emotional learning, um, I felt one important aspect would be, um, self-focus on online school. So outreach for parents and children who are learning online in the social emotional area. Um, another point would be counseling for children exhibiting stress, anxiety, or depression. Um, another asterisk would be training for students, staff, and admin for mindfulness techniques or a mental health first aid. Um, and then also, I think most import- importantly is focus on suicide prevention. And I know there's a lot going on at the state with that right now as well, with, uh, um, tech, Yurba, Yurba, what's her name? Sorry. Oh.
Yubara.
Yubara, sorry. Um, Mrs. Yubara has some, Superintendent Yubara has some really good things going on right now with suicide prevention in schools as well. So that's a good focus to have right now. Um, under school culture, so I have a quote that I put at the bottom of this, but I'm going to read it right first before I read the rest of this. And, um, I feel like leadership, this is my thing, leadership is reflective of the, um, reflected in the culture of a school. And, um, the quote is, "The district should be committed to provide an educational environment where students feel safe, are challenged to grow academically and professionally, or personally, and are treated with respect, um, with respect by district personnel and other students." This, um, so that, you know, with that kind of idea and thinking about that, um, there are some things that we put in here. Um, the one thing that I have a question about here, though, is district policy. Is there a district policy under culture or climate? Either of those two?
Hmm.
Specifically? I looked around and I couldn't.
Not that I can think of. I'd have to do a little more time reviewing that.
Okay. Because I think it might be a good idea for us to have a, a policy on climate and, um, it's just for administrators to follow. Say, oh, this is, you know, each school is individual with their own culture and, and the leadership there brings that culture forward and the, the climate of the schools. And so there is data in the state with accreditation for the schools. I don't have that data yet. I'm looking for it, but there is data on accreditation in the schools. So we should have that data and kind of, you know, use that to weigh, you know, weigh the accountability of the schools and, and where they are with climate and culture. So, under that, that was the first thing I wrote, was we should probably find a district policy and, and base it on that data that we find. And then the second thing, um, we should probably have some, I know, it, it, within their school administration and teacher training in positive school climate. Um, then another point, each school should evaluate the current culture in the school and figure out strengths, weaknesses. And we could do that through surveys, through families, students, and staff. Another point, positive behavior training for, um, positive behavior te- training for admin and teachers, for students. Um, that would involve, um, why do I always forget the name of it? Oh, restorative justice.
Restorative justice, yeah.
Really looking into restorative justice as a, as a positive behavior training piece in the schools. And then, um, also a big one, addressing discrimination in education. At this time, I think there's a lot going on in our society and it should be something that we really pay attention to right now. So, I hope I didn't lose you guys on that stuff, but I, I, we sent off the email and so you'll all have these.
Awesome.
And I could send it to you too, Montia.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Well done. Um, and thank you for the work you put into that.
Okay.
Um, I want to come back to sort of what the next steps are. First, I have to back up and talk to those of us that have not done anything yet. So Jake, just so you have some context, at the last meeting, I can't remember if you had left already or not, but we basically identified that there were three primary areas of strategic focus that were priorities that came from our discussions. There was, um, safety, school safety, which is not new, it's in the mission of the district, but the, the particular focus around student wellness, um, and social emotional health under safety as a, not that our buildings won't continue to be safe and we'll continue to look at that, but the prioritization of social emotional wellness for students as it relates to safety was what bubbled up.
Okay.
Um, the second area is, uh, student achievement. Um, we have some things that we've talked about under that umbrella that include like K through three, K through five reading initiatives, literacy, um, that is another category. And then the third was, um, fiscal sustainability. And obviously, Tisha and Alexi took safety, social emotional wellness. Ben and I have taken on the, um, student achievement piece. And then we thought, um, that you might be interested in the fiscal sustainability. It leaves you kind of as an island, so if you want a teammate, you know, we can see if there's anyone else who'd volunteer to do that with you. Um, but so I just want to stop there and check in. We made some big assumptions there with you not being here and you're welcome to be part of any group that is of interest to you, but we thought sort of dividing and conquering from a strategic process would be helpful.
No, I, I love it. I, and I'm fine to take on fiscal sustainability. And I appreciate what's been done and the direction we're headed. And I do, I'm very much a believer in dividing and conquering, just from a time and a expertise and a logistic standpoint, so.
We, um, so Lexi, because are the three of you on the finance committee?
Yeah.
So we don't, we're going to leave it to you to decide, like, maybe the finance committee is your team?
Okay.
On this, but the.
Or even Blake.
Or, yeah, Blake will obviously be a big part of it as, uh, you know, you, Tisha and Alexi shared that they've been in contact with counselors as a primary resource. Ben and I are going to, um, sit down with administrators and Megan, um, over the next month, right? Yeah. Okay. And, um, and so you get to structure that the way, um, that you see fit, but it, it's really pulling us back to that bigger conversation about the, um, our policy on reserves in the general fund and the big capital projects that are coming down the pike, the analysis of where are we with the sort of fiscal picture of the district and with all the, we don't know what they are exactly, but all of the funding streams are not secret. We know where our funding comes from and looking at, and sort of looking at that, I don't, I don't know why I'm going on and on. You know what this looks like. So, um, so if that sounds good to you, I think, you know, that what, what, uh, Tisha and Alexi just beautifully demonstrated was digging in, identifying some areas, so mindfulness, restorative justice, just to name a couple of things. The next step in the process, um, once we're all done, I feel like in our April meeting, let's come back and look at everything together again. Um, the, the work ceases to be individual when we make recommendations back to staff about, hey, these are the priorities from the board. I would envision that, so we need to have a discussion as a board, like to Jake and Tifa and Alexi. Tifa and Alexi agree with what Ben and I are bringing back to the table in terms of these are the priorities we're seeing? We have to get into alignment again about that. And then I think everything goes back to staff. And it's not in order. It's a, this is what we are seeing? What do you see? What's possible? How would you do it? And that's where we have more of that discussion. So it's here's what we're thinking, here's what we're seeing based on some feedback from you. Now let's give it back to you and how'd you do this? What, what shouldn't be a priority maybe that we're naming right now? And do you have any questions for us? And so that should, if we do that in April and we kind of land on what we want to give back to staff, we have a couple of meetings before the start of the school year to not get into the weeds of execution with staff, but make sure we're in alignment and clear so that as we structure our meetings, starting the next school year, we're having discussions about those very things. Like how is, how are those initiatives going specifically? Maybe the school reports are framed around some of that stuff next year, but it ties in the strategic priorities, I think, nicely to some of the things that we already have going in board meetings. Does that process make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I think the one thing I would say is maybe with, you know, Monty and Blake's okay, I think if I tied Monty or Blake kind of as my partner.
Sure.
I mean, you know, then we could kind of tag team it, is that?
Yeah.
Is that more comfortable with, I mean, Blake, Monty?
Yeah, that's great.
Blake comfortable with that?
He gave me thumbs up.
All right, good.
Was that a thumbs up or was that a no thank you? Okay. And then Monty, you know, we've gone, this gets tricky because of the boundaries between sort of who's responsible for what. Does this process respect that board sets vision and priorities and staff determine how to execute?
Yes, and I think talking through that process helps me understand that the board is listening, gathering feedback, and then whatever the board comes up with, we'll go to staff for another round of kind of review. Again, if anything, any pushback I've had, I'm protective of staff and capacity.
Yeah.
So that's where my pushback has come from. But the back, gathering information and kicking it, and you have 10 and we have five and we come to some agreement, that, that's perfect. So I really appreciate that.
Sure. So you and I have some work to do.
We do.
We'll get on the horn after.
We better check our schedules.
Exactly, maybe we should set up a call before we leave.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Any questions about the process?
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Great.
So when I, when I was thinking about doing this, like I said, I was looking at it from up here because I was getting in the weeds and really digging into all of these little parts and pieces. And so really, I really like that, the way that you've structured this as to pull out what we think is important right now. There's a lot of things in the strategic plan, it's huge. But these things are very much basically what we need now and what we need to look at in the next year or two for.
Yes.
I mean, really for social emotional wellness. I mean, we could, I mean, when I wrote this, I was really trying to stay out of the weeds. So just so you know, it was, there's a lot of, there's, you know, 10 different or so things on here, but they're all things that I think potentially are extremely important right now, so.
And it's not intensive either, what the board's offering. Like there'll be things that are not on our radar that are still very much.
Right.
Priorities. But in terms of what we're putting at the top for the short term, just the neck, this is not deep.
Right.
Long-term strategic planning.
That's what I like about this.
But that we can even spend time circling back to priorities as they relate to the mission in a time of dealing with pandemic logistics, I think, is, is amazing. Says a lot about this board.
I think, I think this view, this piece might be different than what you guys, like our, our vision might be a little bit more narrow to right now because of what's going on with pandemic.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, and your view might be a little bit broader as well with financials. So this really is super.
Responsive to what's happening.
Except for some of the culture, climate piece that I put on here, I think that that's a bigger picture, so.
Great. Thanks. Thanks for showing us how it's done.
Thank you for leading us through this, this is really great.
Oh, I'm great at talking about it. Finding the time to actually do it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
And thank you, Tisha and Alexi, for being prepared this evening. We're not going to have it in anymore than that.
Exactly.
We were terrible.
Oh, I did.
All right, so moving forward, Mr. Wilson, we have a school closure we need to ratify.
Yes, please, back on February 23rd for that weather and hazardous roads. So if the board could approve, that's a factality for the state is why it's on there.
Any questions regarding the formality of this? Okay. So with that, I would entertain a motion to ratify the school closure.
I'll make a motion to ratify the school closure for hazardous weather and road closures for February 23rd of 2021.
Okay, motion to second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the part of the agenda we've all been waiting for, so.
Yes.
Policies. So as we left last month, we discussed that we would take the time, we committed to take the time to review policies 1000 through 1205. And then we'll have an additional assignment for next month. But if we can start on that, Mr. Wilson Newman, you'll pull those up. And as we go through here, what we will do is just read, I'll go ahead and just read the policy number and the, and what the policy, you know, the main description of the policy is. If there's any questions or comments that you have on that said policy, please make it known and, and we can have a discussion regarding that. So first off, policy 1000, legal status and operation. Any questions or comments regarding that policy? Okay. Moving forward, policy 1005. And this is the Board of Trustees and the geographical description of Teton County and trustee zones.
We got those updated, right?
Yeah.
For the September. Okay.
Okay.
And I just, I do have a question on this one, how? In reading this, there's, there's no way I would be able personally to sort of fact-check this policy. How do we know when this needs to be updated? Do you work closely with the county? Like, how, how do we know when this, this information changes? I know it's, it's due to population.
It is, so it's every 10 years after the census data comes in and it's officially released. 10 years ago, we worked with the local county GIS department. The School Board Association is working on finding a service provider that can work with school districts, but every 10 years, the board reviews the updated census data and updates the zone trustee maps to reflect that population data. And then both the map and the legal descriptions need to be updated, approved by the board, and then there's a requirement to submit it to the State Board of Education.
Okay.
So that timeline, Monty, I, you know, I, I did not see that 10-year timeline in here. Is that a state?
It's a state law, so what we could do, Diane, if you'd make a note, actually, it might be that Idaho code.
31.
31143.
County boundaries and county seats.
Do you work with GIS when the census data does come out, Monty? Like last year when we had to update that, or how do you do that?
So officially, in terms of trustee zones, it's every 10 years. The unofficial updates are done by the county, but that doesn't impact the trustee zones.
Okay.
So I know, who's, it gets kind of confusing in Driggs, so.
It doesn't get kind of, they get super confusing.
So Zone 2 goes to Wallace. And that side, that's mine. And then are, is yours the side over there? It's weird, it like.
Like up Ski, up Ski Hill Road.
And then.
And then like.
For the pack saddle essentially, and then.
House car over.
Pack saddle.
You have a pack saddle?
Mm-hmm.
Because clearly, yeah, to the north, and then he hits all the big holes down, all the way to the pass.
All the way to Pine Creek, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. That's a big zone.
And that's linked on our website.
Okay. I just wanted to double check on that one, that was.
That's how, yep. I've studied it enough to, that's kind of the.
Yeah. Thank you.
So the Idaho code that's referenced just talks about the legal description for Teton County. So Diane, if you would add that we need to reference the Idaho code that talks about the requirement of updating it every 10 years per the updated census data. You and I can research that.
Would it make sense, this is just a question, and please hammer it down if not, to include the map on policy?
Yes.
I think.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think that's correct.
Yeah, there were a few mistakes that we made last time in terms of having various drafts that the board was reviewing at the same time.
Yep.
And not reflecting the adopted map within the minutes. So those are lessons learned from 10 years ago.
When we have it, you know, it's on the school board website, so it might be worth just even putting a link on there.
Yeah, we could put that link in the policy for the map. That's a great suggestion.
Do the link.
Yep.
So, so with that, Mr. Wilson, does this need to be revised prior to, since we just got done with the census? Does it need to be revised prior to election in November or?
Well, everything from the federal government is on an adjusted timeframe based on COVID, when they completed the census data, when it's supposed to be officially released. So it has to be released at the federal level. And then we work with ISBA to get their guidance on the service provider to work with on providing the updated maps. Once the map is updated, then the corresponding zones need to have the legal descriptions updated, which then both the board adopts, it gets filed with the county, and then it has to also be submitted to the state. So the county clerk should be tracking that and Diane and I and Blake, just because he's in the loop on dealing with the county clerk, we could follow up with the county clerk in terms of the November election, deadline for filing, and then backtrack that deadline with both the state and the county for filing the map. So that may or may not impact those elections.
All right. That was just a question.
Yep, big question.
Okay, any further questions regarding policy 1005? Okay, so moving forward, forward to policy 1010. This is on the organization and the classification. And this is regarding the district as a whole and kind of our identity and who we are.
Um, under the third paragraph, under Tetonia Elementary and Victor Elementary Schools, we'll have an organizational unit composed of grades one through three. That needs to be K through three. Because Tetonia and Victor have K through three.
Right.
And not just districts.
Okay.
Good catch.
So Mr. Wilson Newman, is our address, did it change when we moved from the district office?
Yes, yep, the district address needs to be adjusted.
Okay.
We're now at 481 North Main.
481, okay.
So are we going to have to do a second reading on these?
I don't think we need to do a second reading. We need to make, unless, and as a board, I mean, you guys can share input here. Do we need to do a second reading?
We're not doing a reading now.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do.
Yeah, there's no need to do a.
Yeah, you're not impacting anything that's significant in the policy.
Okay.
Yep. And Diane, if you have any questions on any of the changes?
Okay.
Please.
So just to clarify the process, like policy 1005 and the one that we're looking at right now, do you want me and Monty to work on those revisions, mark it up, and then bring it back to the board next month?
I would say where they're going to have some, some revisions added in, let's do that, just so that we can follow up, make sure that they're, they're in, and then we can put that, that vote on. And if we, so the policies we're not making any change to, do we need to put a date to those? And we, we probably.
Yeah, we could.
Do we need to vote and accept those as they are at this point in time and that they've been, you know, addressed?
To get through this section, we could, and then that will allow Diane to put the, to change the date.
Okay.
And maybe it changes from revised to reviewed on.
Okay.
Because that's part of the goal, is to show that the board's made the effort to.
Go through.
The policies.
Correct? Okay.
Revised, say revised.
So did you see that, Diane, that we'll be updating the dates? And likely change it from revised on to reviewed on? So we can, and we don't need a, we don't need a list of 10 or 15 dates, it should just be originally adopted and then what the latest review date is.
Okay, so I don't have to have that running tally?
No.
And then also in policy 1010, the pre-K location change, it's not like at Driggs Elementary per se, so now it's at the district office.
Yeah.
And that's. Okay. So we've had three additions or changes in 1010. We've got the address updating, um, Tetonia and Victor Elementary to include K through three, and then also the location of pre-K. Any other changes that need to be made to policy 1010? Okay. So with that, we'll see those adjustments next month, and then we can sign off on that or ratify those.
Monty, your screen says that it's going to enter standby in three seconds.
And go. There it goes.
Okay, so why Monty gets that put back up? So moving forward to policy 1100. This is talking about the membership of the board. Any questions regarding that? Pretty straightforward? Okay.
Students. I actually have a question about policy history. Do we note that we've reviewed the policy? Like, so we've got revised, adopted, revised. Do we note that we've reviewed the policy on the policy?
Yes, that's what's going to.
Future board members?
And that's what's going to come as we get.
That's, so that's, okay, sorry, I missed that.
I'll put that date.
So she'll put reviewed at the bottom of each one of these.
Perfect.
Yep. Okay. Where there's no changes needed, there's no need for a vote on them, it's just stating the date that we've, we've reviewed them. Okay, those that we do have changes, we'll, as we see those next month, we'll, we'll vote on those and then it'll be revised. Okay. Policy 1110. This is board elections. Any questions or changes need to be made there? Okay. Moving forward to policy 1110P. This is regarding candidate edification. Mainly stating on, you know, the size of our district and when these take place. Any questions regarding this policy? Okay, so policy 1120P. And this is the oath of office. Any questions?
Are we on 1120?
Yeah.
1120, yeah, we did 1120, we're on 1120P.
Got it.
Okay. So there's nothing needed to change there, let's move to 1130. This is regarding resignations on the board. Any changes or questions? Okay. Moving forward to policy 1140. Questions?
Nope.
So I, and maybe this is just me being able to understand it, I do have a question here in the main paragraph where it starts in the case of trustee vacancy. here in the main paragraph where it starts in the case of trustee vacancy. I'll just read that. It says, "In the case of a trustee vacancy, the remaining trustees shall fill such vacancy by appointment. The board will receive applications for many qualified persons seeking to fill the position after suitable public notice. The board will consider all applications from qualified persons seeking to fill the position in open session. The board will appoint one candidate to serve until the annual meeting of school district trustees next following such appointment." So is that just regarding the next election? When it says next such appointment, or is that? I'm just looking for clarification.
So that's how I came into this deal.
Right. But where it says the annual meeting, is that, I guess, an annual meeting and an election cycle to me and my mind are kind of two different things.
They are. That should be one Diane making note, let's kick that back to ISBA because that is confusing. Typically, it's been until the remainder of that term expires, and then that individual can choose if they want to run for election for that position.
Okay. Yeah, if we could kick that back, that would be great.
Yeah, because if you're limited to the annual meeting, then you'd be doing it all over again.
Yeah, and I don't know why we would
Yeah.
Want to try to restart the process at an annual meeting.
Yeah, that's a great question.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Policy 1200, annual organization meeting. And this is where it talks about what we go through in January, the organization of the board. Any questions regarding this policy? Okay. And then policy 1205, school board powers and duties. I just want to point out the first sentence of this policy. "The board shall concern itself primarily with board questions of policy rather than with administrative detail." I appreciate the discussion and your comments tonight, Shannon, about strategic plan and kicking that back to the administration, so. Okay, any questions or comments regarding this policy?
I do, I just, of course, I have a question and I popped off the screen. So what was the number again?
1205.
Okay, hold on a sec.
Do you want mine?
Nope, I got it. Okay, so, um, damn, I keep on, sorry. Excuse me, I just keep closing it. I didn't mean to. I'm so tired. Does anybody have caffeine? Okay, 1205. So my question is around, let me open it again. This computer's so sensitive. Okay. Employee staff, all staff members and fixes and prescribes their duties. So under this, just close it again. How does that, I mean, that's not very detailed. This is not very detailed in school board duties. We have, we have other places that have, you know, more descriptive ways of what our actual duties are, and we've gone over a lot of those. But I, I kind of feel like we should have that in policy too. Like, the fact that we do our evaluation of Monty and also how, you know, we have to approve the hires and fires. And I'd love more detail on all of those things.
And my simple answer is, those are all detailed in other policies.
Okay. Should they be referenced in this policy? Because there's, there is
In theory, you could. ISBA hasn't drafted that way. If you started referencing every policy that applied to other ones, you'd have two or three pages of references.
Okay.
So that might be why it's raised this way.
If you just saw this, you wouldn't realize that we have a lot more, you know, there's a lot more going on than these 10 things.
Right.
You know, there's, there are a lot more things going on. And so I think getting into the soup a little bit more about the number three on here might be a good idea. Maybe some, just a few more references in there. I don't know if anybody else agrees or?
So maybe what we do is kick this to ISBA and see if they have any recommendations or, you know, why we're doing this.
Yeah.
For next month.
Or if we get to that as we get through all the other policies.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So why don't we kick that off as well? Okay, so Diane, to this portion of policy, do you have any questions regarding, any that we've gone over this time?
I think everything's pretty clear on what I need to do, and I'll follow up on four different policies, the 1005, 1010, 1140, and 1205. And I'll just work with Monty in the meantime over the month, and then we'll bring everything back to the board next month.
Okay.
Sound good?
Okay. And as far as those other policies that we are not going to have any changes to, let's just put a review date to the bottom of those, and we can count those as being reviewed to this point in time.
And is this the time we want to map out the next section of general policy to review for the next meeting?
Yep. Is that digestible for everybody, this?
Great.
Yeah, but then, I still don't feel very good about that 1205.
Okay.
Like, I really, I kind of think maybe we should go read through those together, the duties of the board.
Okay.
Does anybody else feel like that's?
Yeah, I don't disagree. I would just be one, I'd be curious if there's already something out there that ISBA's published that we could maybe, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Try to recreate the wheel. That'd be my only thought with regards to that. But I'm open to doing either, but we should see what's out there as well.
We're doing pretty good on time, but I, I just feel like, I don't know, I think it's really important that we understand these duties of the board and that we all know exactly, you know, what our role is and these duties are. So there's just so little description in here.
Yeah.
If you were looking for duties of the school board, it's a lot more in depth than this. But having a really good, I mean, this is a good basic idea, so maybe we should read through it. And if we have more questions, then, you know.
Kick it back to ISBA?
Yeah.
Okay. So
I'm sorry if you guys want to kick me out right now.
No, why don't we go ahead and read through those 10 points?
Thank you.
And policy 1205. So
Maybe with a little description if we need them.
Okay.
You know.
So Mr. Wilsonham, could you read those for us?
I can.
As
Those 10 specific items?
Yep, those 10 specific items, and then, and then we can have a discussion as far as, you know, what that is and maybe a little more description, you know, as far as what that is.
Okay. Duties of the Board of Trustees. One, enacts policy. Two, adopts courses of study and provides instructional aids. Three, employs all staff members and fixes and prescribes their duties. Four, approves the budget, financial reports, audits, major expenditures, payment of obligations and policies whereby the administration may formulate procedures, regulations, and other guides for the orderly accomplishment of business. Five, estimates and seeks to provide funds for the operation, support, maintenance, improvement, and extension of the school system. Six, provides for the planning, expansion, improvement, financing, construction, maintenance, use and disposition of physical plant of the school system. Seven, prescribes the minimum standards needed for the efficient operation improvements of the school system. Eight, evaluates the educational program to determine the effectiveness with which the schools are achieving the educational purpose of the school system. Nine, requires the establishment, maintenance of records, accounts, archives, management methods, and procedures considered essential to the efficient conduct of school business. Ten, provides for the dissemination of information relating to the schools necessary for creating a well-informed public.
Okay, so as we go down through these, can we, you know, like, gear tag something, you know, like the strategic plan to one of those? You know, as we go through it, you know, to what you're saying, Tisha, is being able to define
Right.
More of how we do that.
Right.
So
Like number eight, you could add strategic planning to that.
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
So number eight also, I have a question about that because, I mean, what, how do we evaluate educational programs to determine the effectiveness?
I feel like
So we haven't been really getting a lot of information in these meetings about this topic here. And so that's why I kind of question that one right there. Like, are we supposed to get that just with standardized tests, or do we get to hear bits and pieces, or, you know, this is a big question.
I think the question you're asking is
How?
Part of, is in the how?
Yeah.
I'm not in favor of adding the how to this because I think each board gets to decide how they want to evaluate, how they, the idea that the board evaluates is the directive. And how boards do that changes, we're gonna change how we do that, potentially with how we're thinking about strategic planning. So there's some, there's a part of me that is a bit resistant to that level of specificity in policy because it, even strategic planning, like, yes, we all agree that that is a great process, but do we want to in policy that we prescribe to the board, like, hold all boards forever to that process?
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I feel like where we evaluate the educational program, I feel like we do that every month in the school department reports. That's where I feel like that that plays in. When I read that, that's what I thought of.
Right. I don't feel like we get a lot of feedback in that department, honestly, as far as student achievement. We haven't really been getting much of that kind of information.
So Miss Baybee, she does give us some overview on that, and it's usually in the links that she provides.
Right.
And you know that sometimes depending on when our assessments are, you know, it may change in a given month, it may not.
Okay.
Just because of when the assessments are being taken. So that's something to keep your eye on there as far as when and how that happens as well.
Okay.
So can I ask you a question, Tisha? Are you just looking more like for more specificity or more deep?
There's just, I think there's certain things that I feel like we're not accomplishing that are on this list. That's kind of what I'm getting at here.
Gotcha.
So I, I mean, number three, I really don't think that we're following that bit of the policy very well. And number eight, I think that that description helped a lot. You know, I didn't really quite understand that. And I'm just asking a lot of questions as a new board member.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because this is, some of these things are, it seems like, I think we're really nailing number four. Thank you, Blake. You know, and
Number six?
Yeah, number six.
So what about like with number three, like when we, when we like negotiate the master contract, for example, with TA? That's
That's, yes.
Employing the teachers because those details are laid out in specific
Right, okay.
Quantity of figures. So for me, again, I can kind of read that and say, that's how we're employing at least half of, you know, and then we have our specific contracts with admin, you know what I mean?
Right.
That's how I kind of interpret that a little bit, that we are employing the people, and then we're also making sure that we have financial stability to pay the, to pay our employees.
Right, and that's number four.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is the discussion that I really wanted. And, you know, with the employees, all staff members, and prescribes their duties. So that, I mean, that really does come across, and, you know, with our, when we have to do evaluations, we don't ever see teacher evaluations.
No.
We don't ever see principal evaluations. You know, we don't see, we just see your evaluation. And is that the way that works?
Correct.
Yep.
We don't see principal.
No, you see mine.
So in Idaho code statute, we are supposed to evaluate principal?
No.
I have it right here in my
Made a butt out at the end of the meeting, Tisha, the secret
Sorry, it's right here. Idaho statute, wait, here's financial. Let me see, I'm pretty sure it was under, is it 315 or 313? Number three, "To employ through written contract principals who shall hold valid certificate appropriate to the position for which they are employed, who shall supervise the operation and management of the school in accordance with the policies established."
Which Idaho code are you in?
This is Idaho code, this is under Title 33 Education, Chapter 5 District Trustees. So I, maybe I need help understanding that one.
Which Idaho code are you reading from?
Oh, sorry, 33-315.
33315?
Uh huh.
Let me get
You have your book there too.
I do.
I just, I just printed off the board one, trustee.
I have Google.
Yeah, you can Google it.
I'm there.
I just, I printed them, so.
You're way into me.
33-315? 33513.
Yes, sorry. I really need caffeine tonight, I'm sorry.
Okay.
This would be worse if I had some, probably.
Subsection three?
Yes.
Okay.
"To employ through written contract principals who shall hold valid certificate appropriate to the position for which they are employed, who shall supervise the operation management of the school." So we employ the assistant superintendents under number four. And so that section right there is where my question is, number three.
Okay.
With principals. Are we supposed to do some sort of a principal evaluation?
No.
Or?
Because the rest of three reads, "Who shall supervise the operation and management of the school in accordance with policies established by the Board of Trustees, and who shall be under the supervision of the superintendent."
Right. But I, I'm, I was thinking that that is saying that that's, I mean, we're supposed to review their contract as well.
So each year
Yeah, we are supposed
We bring the recommendation to rehire certified staff, administrative staff, and classified
This was happening like right when I came
Yeah, no, totally. Yeah, I'm glad you're asking these questions.
Yeah.
So we bring those as a group for renewal, for hire, to the board.
Okay.
Annually. So that, you're absolutely correct in that regard.
Okay.
But the board evaluates me, I evaluate principals and supervisors.
So we don't
Principals evaluate teachers and their staff. So there's a hierarchy to the evaluation and supervision system.
So we just have to approve those?
You're approving for renewal, rehire, the group of employees, administrative, certified, then classified.
Okay.
Correct.
And so that's what number three is?
Correct.
On this?
Yes.
Yeah, and it's also ensuring that they meet the qualifications outlined, you know, whether it's, you know, teacher or administrator. In that case, it was administrator or principal that had to have those qualifications. We have to ensure that before they're retired.
And there's a lot of other places where duties are defined. As Jake referenced, it's in the master agreement. There's other board policies that spell out specifically which employees are supposed to do what responsibilities. It's in their contract that they sign.
Okay.
It's built into the evaluation process. So there's, and we also have job descriptions for every position. So there's five or six sources of information that define, to me, this is appropriate because duties should be at the board level. All the details and weeds are with staff, and we have all the documentation for that.
Okay.
Yeah, great question.
Yeah, that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah. No, I'm glad you're asking. Thank you.
Well, that's why I thought we needed, I needed to go, I personally needed to go through this a little bit.
Yeah, that's great.
So, okay.
And I appreciate that, Tisha. And, you know, as you go through this, as, you know, ask those questions, we appreciate that because, you know, through experience, I can go back and say, okay, yeah, we cover this process, you know, here, it's covered there. But, you know, you're spot on in asking those questions, you know, because that's a, that's a big part. It's a big part of our responsibility.
I'll probably be texting you with like 15 more questions on this, but I think I'll, I'll go ahead and stop with those.
That's, go ahead and do it. Yep.
You still want me to ask ISBA?
Yes. Please kick it back and see if there's any, you know, because this is duties of the board, I'd love to have them look at it, and if there's something that needs to be added or subtracted.
Reference.
That's why we're doing this.
Yeah.
What can we reference in here to make this What can we reference in here to make this a little bit more descriptive?
Yeah, I mean, there's more duties in this section to like thirteen fifteen goes into the strategic plan, so.
Right. We don't say anything about this.
Throughout the document.
Right.
The policies.
Right. Okay. So let, let's kick that back. So as we look to next month, um, as far as, you know, what we want to review. And again, we'll do a, a review over the, is it four or five that we're, we'll bring back, Diane?
Four.
Four? Okay, so we'll include those as well, but, uh, where does that take us, those of you who have our policies pulled up?
About fourteen, ten would be another ten, uh, eleven or twelve.
Okay.
Twelve, five to fourteen, ten.
Okay.
You get that, Diane, twelve, oh, five to fourteen, ten for next month?
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Good. Any further questions or comments on, on these first policies? Okay, if not, let's go ahead and turn the time over to Diane to take us into the remainder of our policies.
Thanks. So, um, the rest of the policies that the board's going to look at, these are all required changes per ISBA. Uh, the next policy we're going to review is policy thirty-sixty, education of homeless children. And again, this is called policy two. One sec. I accidentally closed. Sorry about that.
See, I'm not the only one who does this.
That's okay, it'll just take me a sec. So I'll just review the changes real quick. So at this policy, we're going to, uh, change five under the term homeless and homeless individual and homeless in person include. And then under five, we're going to add an unaccompanied student living in any of the circumstances described in clauses one through three above. And then we're going to strike A, B, and C. And then under transportation services, under section comparable services, transportation services, we're going to add students may be provided with additional transportation services if needed to ensure the student's full participation in the district's education program. And that's the final change.
Okay, any questions regarding the, uh, changes to policy thirty-sixty? Okay. Um, these are the required, uh, policy changes and there weren't any additionals even in the references, I didn't see. So is there a motion to accept the changes to policy thirty-sixty?
I'll make a motion to adopt the, um, policy changes for policy thirty-sixty for education of homeless children.
I'd second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to second. Any need for further discussion? Okay, y'all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Diane?
Right. So then for policy seventy-two eighteen, federal grant, financial management system. This one is being updated. It's a, again, a required change to the required policy. And this update reflects a recent change in federal awards requirements, which increased the micro purchasing amount from twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand.
Okay.
And so on seventy-two eighteen, uh, we're just going to update those amounts. In number three, we're going to strike twenty-five thousand, we're going to add thirty thousand. And then we also have to put in the name of the software for accounting records.
So the name of our accounting software, is that?
Skyward.
Skyward? Okay. So there's two locations where that goes?
Yeah, overview of financial management accounting system, we'll add Skyward. Skyward. And then just update that from twenty-five to thirty thousand.
Okay.
In that one section that I referenced.
Okay, any further questions regarding changes to policy, uh, seventy-two eighteen? Okay, I'll, is there a motion? Hold on, Monty.
I caught, let me find it. There was one.
One more additional spot?
Whole name of the district is in a lower paragraph. Obviously, we just put in Teton School District four oh one, that's in.
And in accounting records, it asked that as well, that.
Yeah, in accounting records and indirect cost, right, we plug in the name of the school district. And the area that I caught, just to make it, um, accurate with our school district, they use the general language under the section budget control. And accounting records, they use the title business manager, which is common language, but I think we should also add CFO because we're using that title in our school district.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the, uh, addition of the name of the software, which is Skyward. The addition of, uh, using CFO with the business manager. Okay, and then the, also in accounting records, installing the word Skyward in our name of our software. Then on, uh, changing the update from the twenty-five thousand to the thirty thousand. Any further changes, questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to adopt the changes to policy seventy-two eighteen, federal grant, financial management system.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Diane?
So policy seventy-four fifty-five, this update reflects the recent change in federal awards requirements, which increased micro purchasing again from the twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand. And again, this is a required change to required policy. So that policy really follows the same change that we just saw.
Okay, any questions regarding those changes from twenty-five to thirty thousand?
So it's under the district's covered transactions with third parties. We're going to just strike the twenty-five, change to thirty, twice in that same paragraph. Down below to the value of the subcontract is expected to exceed or equal thirty thousand. And then we're going to add a legal reference of government-wide environment and suspension.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll motion to accept the changes to policy seven four five five.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Diane, one more?
So this one reflects the changes in the federal awards that now requires the polls out section, which you have a hundred and twenty day period to submit all reports required by the terms and conditions of the federal award. Under district grants, we're going to add the word federal. And then we're going to change it from ninety to one twenty. And then we're going to add a paragraph, "The district shall submit all financial performance and other reports required by the terms and conditions of the federal award before the end of this hundred and twenty day period. Any such reports required to be submitted to a pass-through entity shall be provided within ninety days of the end of the funding period unless an extension is authorized." And that's the final change proposed.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding those changes? Is there a motion to accept those changes?
I'll make a motion to, um, accept the changes to policy for seven four five O P one.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion, which I didn't see any? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you. So that brings us to a close of our policy. Just to recap, um, we will be, uh, in preparation for next month, we will be looking at policy twelve oh five through fourteen.
Ten.
Four, fourteen, ten? Okay. So thank you and thanks Diane for getting those, uh, updates and, uh, also sending those off for, for clarification and, as well for next month. Okay, any need, need to address any further policies or questions regarding policies? Okay. All right, so moving forward, uh, just to recap on Idaho Legislative Day on the Hill Review. Any comments regarding Day on the Hill? Takeaways?
I couldn't get on to watch it. I mean, they didn't have any, we were told we could watch it afterwards.
And you couldn't?
No, I emailed them and asked them and they said it just hasn't been uploaded yet.
No.
But that was during Day on the Hill week and I haven't heard anything since. And I, I've looked for it and can't find it. But I really don't have a lot of time to go sit in on legislative sessions during my workday, so it's kind of hard to do that without actually being there.
Right.
Yeah, so that, I, I really didn't, wasn't able to really, was anybody else able to watch it?
I watched two sessions, um.
During?
No, it was after. So I, I don't know what I did that you would have done differently.
I don't know. I emailed and asked and they were like.
And I watched during, so I don't know about after, so, yeah, I just.
I went back in the. Wohova, however you say. I just went back and accessed the login that was set up.
For Day on the Hill?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't get it.
Yeah, so I, and I, yeah, so I searched my inbox because I hadn't kept track of it, found that.
Okay.
Login information and then just logged in. And I think it's up there for like six months.
Okay, cool.
Contents over a while.
Because they have some good information on their, their workshops are actually really, look like they'd be very good. I would like to watch them, so that, thank you.
So any other updates about Day on the Hill? As far as what we saw? And they had, uh, there were a few takeaways. I, I do have one that we'll talk about in other business that, uh, I put to Mr. Wilson Hume and, uh, so we'll bring it up there. ISBA, they continue to, uh, try to give us great direction and, uh, support even during this time. Definitely always better to be in, in person if we could. The, uh, you know, some of it was, again, just, uh, I can't even remember the titles of the, the classes, but it was like board conduct and, you know, some of the, just how to, how we should be as a board. And, and, you know, as we went through that, as they went through it, you know, I appreciated where we're at as a board, trying to stay in our lane and not overstep our bounded, uh, the admin's lane as well and being respective of that. So, yeah. So as we get down into other business, I'll bring up another point that, you know, it caught my attention, I brought to Mr. Wilson Hume and, uh, so we'll discuss it there. Okay? And it'll actually, uh, I think fall in, does it, it doesn't quite fall into, doesn't quite fall into next month's policy, policy review yet, but be something to get on your radar. Okay, so moving forward, National School Board Conference, um, that's online, April eighth through the tenth. As far as registration for that, is that similar to what we've been seeing on the state side or? Haven't gotten on, in all those registrations on that. Diane?
I just wasn't sure if anybody wanted to attend and your feedback on.
Is it virtual or is it?
It's virtual.
It's virtual. Okay.
I'll say that they have some categories directly related to the way that we've divvied up our.
Strategic.
Strategic priorities. So they've got like a student wellness category, they have a student achievement category as well as a fiscal category. So it might be worth just going to the website and looking. It could, it's expensive. I think it's like six hundred bucks a person, is that right? So we'd want to weigh that cost, but if it feels like it could be helpful as we're doing this work, it'd be worth looking up.
Yes, it would. Okay. Let's look at that. Is there a deadline on that, Diane?
Well, it's a buy one registration, get one free.
Oh.
I, I, I'm just curious. We could share through.
Yeah, I haven't looked into the details to see if you could share that out or if it's just by individual. That's a good question. And do you have an individual rate and a board rate?
A one and we could divvy it out, you know, with these respective.
I'd say look at it and if you're interested, email Diane and we'll get you registered for it.
Okay, so let's look at that and do that. Yeah, we won't. Okay. All right. So board member input for future agendas.
Will strategic planning continue to be each month?
Yes, let's put it on.
Just want to make sure we're all on the same page there. Got it. Thank you.
And, uh, so as well with next month, let's put, uh, mishaps or are we adding another TA category? Just see if there's any other updates?
That'd be great.
Okay. So, all right, anything else at this time? Okay, um, board calendar. We got the plant facility levy renewal vote that'll take place in May. Um, that's a five hundred thousand dollar levy. Uh, Mr. Wilson Hume, anything you want to add to that?
Uh, Jeannie is close to finishing the brochure. That, uh, we'll do a final review and that will be both a mail, uh, physical mailing to all addresses as well as printing out, have copies available in schools. Uh, sometimes some businesses have been willing to have copies available on their counter or at their place of business, so, and obviously a big push on social media.
Okay.
Anything you want to add to that, Jeannie?
Um, just that I'm going to be talking to Angela about seeing if we can get some teachers to write letters together perhaps?
That'd be great.
So it's part of the campaign.
So.
Informational, yeah.
Yep. So can you also speak for just a moment on the purpose of this levy?
So basically it helps us to maintain our facilities and our equipment. So it helps make up the difference on purchasing new buses. If we only went off of state depreciation, we'd probably buy a new bus every two, two and a half years instead of one every year, if not two. It helps us offset technology, not just student devices, but, uh, the infrastructure, the network, the backbone of the, all the information that we're sending out and upgrades that need to happen. Roofs, doors, windows, um, updating parking lots, lighting. You know, there's not a lot of money that comes from the state to maintain facilities and that's where the plant facility helps fill that void. It's not for staff, it's not for salaries, it's maintaining the physical buildings, buses, equipment that we have to run the operations of the school district.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding that?
Um, I just wonder what percentage we get from the state versus what we actually spend.
Uh, Blake would have to run those numbers and we could get that to you. You hear the Idaho lottery advertised, it's all for public schools. We get a little bit from the lottery, but yeah, Blake could run those numbers. I'll ask him to look into that and then send that out to the board to answer that question.
I think it would be interesting to see that just to kind of understand. I think it would be interesting to see that, just to kind of understand, like, what the actuals are.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Yeah.
We can get that to you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Our next regular board meeting is April twelfth. Is there any need to have another one in between?
No.
Not at this time? Okay. So we'll plan for our next regular board meeting, April twelfth. Um, and then another business, a live stream for board meetings in-person attendance by the public. So, so this question came up is, uh, I watched Day on the Hill. They, they mentioned that live stream could be a, to, to put it as a place on the agenda as a, uh, is more of a.
Courtesy?
A courtesy, and that's what it was under, is a courtesy live stream. And this is something that we've been doing in our district for two and a half, three years, Jeannie? Three years?
Two and three.
Okay. And so, you know, the question that, you know, I had with, with Mr. Wilson Hume was, um, and as it came up is, you know, as we've gone through COVID, we were instructed that if our live stream, for some reason, went defunct and, and, uh, we lost it, that we would shut our meeting down and, and resume at a later date when our live stream was back up. So the question that we, uh, we wanted to pose to the board was, is that something that we want to still consider? Is that something we want to add into policy because our live stream is not part of our policy at this time? And, and just gather thoughts. More than anything, get it on your radar as we, as we move forward with policies, looking at policy fifteen hundred. Do you have something else you'd like to add with that?
No, and that's the link, is board meetings are spelled out and board policy fifteen hundred. So as we get to that section, what, what expectation the board has to provide that service to the community would be important to include in the policy.
Do we want to keep it as a, as a?
As a courtesy versus a policy?
Versus, you know, this is something that we follow. Yeah.
I just had a thought. If our live stream ever did go down, um, would it be possible if Jeannie just recorded the meeting and then uploaded it to like the school email or school website? Is, could that be like a part of it instead of having to like cancel the meeting? I'm just, that's.
And I think that's part of the discussion we need to have. And, and that's, that's why, you know, the question exists and, and it's there is, you know, are we willing to, to go to that? Are we willing to say, you know, that, how many more people do we reach in a public meeting having it livestreamed? And, and are we respectful of those who are watching in, in attendance that way as well? So just something to get on your radar. You know, it's, uh, not something that we've had in policy, but also, you know, they were, they were recommending it being a courtesy, but at the same time, we've, we are, you know, this has been something that we've kind of stood behind and really, you know, been proud of. At times, I mean, that, you know, I get, we've been Monday night man attraction many times, but, uh, you know, if that's what it takes to keep our community involved and part of what's going on, I mean, it's a, I, I think it's a very viable and, you know, service that we're offering as well, so. Any comments regarding that?
No, I think it's, I think it's good to livestream because it does keep things transparent and really, if people care, they can watch. You know, it's really important to have that communication for people. Um, I still find myself explaining to people what we talked about in board meetings because they didn't really want to watch the meeting, but, um, you know, I think it's the best way to get the message out there. And so I think it's a good idea to keep live streaming for sure. But I think the question is more based on, how to, if for some reason we're supposed to lose the live stream, right? Or if we do lose the live stream.
Correct.
So, yeah, I think Alexi's idea is really great.
So, so let's look at that as we move forward into that policy and, and we'll be able to address it there, so. Okay, any other, uh, other business that we need to bring up at this time? Okay. There was a public comment that we did have to, to share at this time. Are there any other pu- public comments at this time? Okay. So Diane, I'll turn the time to you.
Sure. Uh, the school board received a letter from Tiffany Wilson and I'll go ahead and read the letter. I just wanted to reach out with a concern. Last week I watched, uh, social media was flooded with pictures from the varsity basketball in the high school. I was thrilled to see the bleachers packed and full of spectators from my school and the visiting school. I couldn't help but notice the majority of those in attendance were unmasked. Upon further investigation, I was told that spectators were asked to mask. My issue is I don't know how we feel good of, about allowing our high school to be filled with unmasked people. And then in turn, the next day force our kids to wear a mask all day, including outside at recess. I was in favor of masking in the beginning so that we could get our schools open and so we could learn more about COVID and see if they were helpful. I don't have numbers or statistics, but would be happy to get them for you. But the majority of other school districts around us in southeast Idaho do not require masks on their students and never have and have similar COVID numbers to us. I think it's time as a school board to discuss removing masks from our students. I would, I would like to at least see it on an agenda to have some plan put in place to remove masks. If masks are required next year, I will be pulling my kids from the school districts and I know many other parents feel the same way. Thank you for your effort on behalf of our school district. I look forward to hearing from you. Tiffany Wilson.
Okay, thank you. So before we adjourn, I just want to, you know, thank you as board members for your time, your effort, your service. You know, I had the great opportunity to listen to two brothers announce a basketball game. Jake? And, uh, there were some school board jokes that were thrown out there. But, uh, you know, more than that, my takeaway wasn't the school board jokes, Jake. But, uh, it was that I, I appreciate everybody here and their, their interest in the district. And it's not just the service that you put in here, is that you continue to serve outside of this room in this, in, in this capacity as a board member, so thank you. So, you know, I appreciate that. I know that the community sees that as well. So thank you for your leadership and, and your willingness to, to give of yourself and your time freely. I know it's not easy and it, uh, it, it's a hard paying job. And, uh, we, we don't look at that part of it. And that's, that's one thing is that you guys don't look at that part of it and so I appreciate that. So thank you. So with that, if there's nothing else to be brought up, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting before nine o'clock.
Second that.
Woo-hoo.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you everyone.